If this is a learning experience, please somebody help me.
Well, the learning experience is that I agree with the administration and I would have wanted this to pass, so I'm wondering if Ed Betza could give us some knowledge as to what's going to happen when it doesn't pass.
Yeah, well, here's a problem. You've got a budget that is increasing that are not on the agenda and that council has indicated as a whole there's not support for. So the budget as it's drafted right now is short some number of revenue. So your choices are simple. Your choice is either to increase the revenue, and the only way you could do that at this juncture would be to raise taxes. The second way you could do it is to pull money from some form, some other fund, reserves or some types of savings, to the extent that that exists. And then the third option would be to cut the budget to match the decrease in revenue. Those are your only options. And so the dilemma that we have, though, we're at another dilemma, is from 6:30 to 7:00, council can't discuss and debate this issue. So when Paul, Mr. Lickewalder asks a very good question, don't answer that question right now because the way this meeting was advertised is that the official discussion and the meeting begins at 7:00. I have no problem with you being here at 6:30, receiving information, preparing for your meeting, but you can't conduct your meeting until 7:00.
We have 15 minutes.
Yeah. Ed, are they allowed to ask me any questions?
Yeah, it's an info, it could be an informational session. So if you say, "I want to know where you're going to get the money," because let me tell you why. And no, you can ask the question, "Where are you going to get the money?" But don't, don't offer any explanation, at least until 7:00. I want to keep us out of trouble.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with the budget we prepared. I guess for nine minutes, if anybody has any questions, I can answer, I can answer those questions in nine minutes.
Mayor Joe, do you want to say anything to affirm?
Well, I mean, I really believe in the budget that we presented to you. I believe that's the best thing long-term for the citizens. If we don't do the fee increases that we've proposed, fees are going to go up much more in the coming years. And over the law, over the next four or five years, people will be paying more than they would have paid if they had just been two small and two severe proposals. That's the reason we propose that. But it's up to you to decide now. You have the votes to do it, you know, whatever you think is best.
Ed Betza, can I ask the administration to, our budget book does have projected increases. We have a five-year budget projection in there. So can I ask Paul to just read those numbers to us for both sewer and refuse? Not for, not for 2022, but we have the numbers. I think it's on page 98 and 99. I think that's information.
We're proposing for, you know, I mean, for 2022, with the budget as is, each taxpayer or each homeowner or each customer of, you know, that's a refuse customer will pay in the neighborhood of $70 per quarter. In 2023, depending on all the expenditures that we have in that fund, holding true to the historical patterns, you're going to spend about $76, $79 in 2024, just south of $81 in 2025.
And would you be able to read, I feel, feel like I'm a, like I'm in Congress or something like, let's, yeah, like, yeah, like I'm a lawyer, like I'm going to read like a Dr. Seuss book or something. But would you be able to, in the budget handouts, maybe page 36, I'm not sure, or I can find it, where you have comparable refuse rates for surrounding municipalities?
Yes. Fairview Township, right now, the people in Fairview, and again, these are what we got a couple of months ago. So I don't know if their budgets have passed, but 21, they were paying $81.29. Northeast, $75. Gerard, $81.30. Harbor Creek, $61.14. Mill Creek, $59.76. And Mrs. Allen was correct, and Mill Creek does have that buy-your-bag program, which I wasn't aware of. Wesleyville, $56. Lawrence Park, $46.35. Green Township, it varies because you have to contract with an independent contractor, and the same in Summit.
Paul, do you also have information on how many of those municipalities are contracted or have their own sources?
Two, two of those are contracted out to a third party, and then one, two, three, four, five. Oh, they're all, all of those have, Michael, let me, they don't do their own garbage pickup. Like, they don't have a department as we do. They, but through one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of them, the municipality itself contracts out with a third party, and two of them, you as a homeowner would call somebody and have them pick it up. Did I answer that the way you were asking? Okay. So yeah, they're all through, they're all through the municipality.
Paul, has the pandemic had any effect on these five-year guesses?
Um, well.
Look at me when you answer, you know.
Oh, okay. To some extent, yes. I mean, we know that last year there was a little bit of a downturn in the collections with garbage and sewer, refuse and sewer, but we've, we've picked that back up again, where we're back to the 98% of all billings are out for, that are, that are being collected.
Thank you.
Paul, following Mr. Brazinski's question, did any of that have any effect on this year, 2021, that there was possibly a shortfall or?
No, absolutely. In the sewer fund, and you know, we talk about that every, every month at the finance committee meetings, the sewer billings are way down, and the collections of those sewer billings are at where they should be, 98%. So the collections are equal to where they, they used to be after council enacted the ordinance in 2014, when, you know, we got tough, we started shutting people's water off. But the billings are down. People are using, as we all know, your sewer billings based on your water usage. Sewer billings, again, Mrs. Allen's probably going to find the chart for me, but, but the CCF usage has gone down again, again this year.
So following that up, the, once again, the tipping fees went up for recyclables?
Yes, they did.
Only this year. The regular garbage, there again.
That'll go up again in 2020. Well, I, I'm sorry for saying that will go up again. That contract is up again in 2023. And the last time that contract went up, that contract is average going up about 20% every three years. I mean, it just, it costs, you know, the landfill charges more.
And what are we showing for, we're showing $600,000 in tipping fees for 2023, is what you're saying?
Correct. That's if, if we take that historical increase that either waste management, I mean, they've won the contract the last few years, but I mean, that's what that's gone up the last three or four years. And I don't know, again, I don't know what's going to happen next fall when we put that out for bid, but that's what, that's what's happened.
And our recyclables will probably be down. I'm just, and there again, I just got an email this morning, ladies and gentlemen, regarding a glass recycling program. And there again, I know it's early stages and it really may not, doesn't affect 2022 as much, but may be on if it, if the numbers we got or some of the information we got would come to fruition. And I guess with that being said, is that, would that number stay the same, maybe?
It could possibly be helpful to the budget, yes. But I read the email too, and there's a lot of ifs, ifs to that, that have to be.
Worked out.
Worked out, correct. I mean, yeah, in theory, it sounds, it sounds very good. So it, it could be helpful in 2023. And again, you know, I don't want to be held to, tipping fees are going up for sure because I don't, nobody knows. You know, when we prepare this budget, we, you know.
You go by functions or whatever.
You know, I can Google, "Our tipping fee's going to go up," and, you know, I don't know, let's go to Vegas and play roulette.
Paul, can you clarify, though, that you shouldn't have been, we should not have been recycling glass anyhow because glass is not acceptable as a recyclable.
That's correct.
And when did that go away? That went away a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago, yeah. You throw that in your garbage bag each week.
Right. Or if you are a good steward of the environment, you would have taken your glass and you would have taken it to one of the three sites where you could drop off your glass. Because that has been an effect for, how many, we have two different glass recyclers now. So that's been an effect for.
Maybe two.
A while.
Couple, yeah, long, yeah, a few years.
But I'm still thinking people are probably putting glass in the recyclers. I don't think that has been.
But if, if they put it in the recyclables, it's going to tarnish all the recyclables, so it's going to go into garbage, not in the recycling.
Yes, Mr. Sis did say, and that's correct. And if, if you throw your, your pizza box, it has to be clean paper and it has to be the proper.
And understand your regular garbage, if they, and people are doing it, they did it before, they are doing it now, putting that in the regular garbage and not in all of their stuff in regular garbage. I mean, back when the recycling program was at its peak, and recyclables, we were actually making money, I believe, as a city, or getting some revenue from it. I don't think people were recycling as much then, as much as they could have, but I think it's probably even worse now. But, I mean, it's.
No, that's just.
Like I said, we got an email this morning that, eh, might be beneficial down the road, that's all. And I, and I, Liz, I understand when we compare our municipality to others regarding what we pay and what Fairview grants you and sewer and stuff, but at the end of the day, people aren't coming Erie because our garbage fees are less. They're going out of the city because total taxes and stuff like that are less.
Well, I think we can't debate that, and it's almost 7:00. However, could we have in the, I don't know if this is the record or not, since it's not an official meeting, can I or can you read from page 32 of the budget handbook comparing sewer rates by the quarter? That's, that's the municipal comparison there on sewer rates, page 34. I can read it. I'll read it. Okay.
Yeah.
Average quarterly bill for City of Erie, sewer customers, 79.28. Comparable quarterly bills, these are all comparable quarterly bills, Green Township, $288. Gerard, $129. Fairview Township, $120. Harbor Creek Township, $117.25. Wesleyville Borough, $98.50. Summit Township, $93. Mill Creek Township, $84. Lawrence Park Township, $86.49. And Borough of Northeast, $75.32.
Can I have a poverty level from those areas? Can I have a number of fixed income people in those areas? Can I impact the people who are basically making it renting right now, who would, with those fees enacted, be adding to their monthly total for rent? Apples and oranges here, folks. That's why I've been so adamant about what I'm doing for at least one year. I said at the beginning, I say it again, throw the folks a bone who have been holding this city up on its shoulders.
No, 69.
You got what was here. Okay. It's not a bad one. We just have to find a million three, I think. Right, Mr. Lee? Mr. L?
Yes. Yeah, if you give, you know, guidance as to what council, you know.
Is, is the majority of council not going to pass the budget as is?
Mayor, I just wondered if Kathy Schott had asked us each to send in our ideas, could we each go one by one and give our ideas that, I don't know if everybody did, but I, I did.
Yeah, two months to get ideas, not the 23rd hour, Liz. Were there ideas two months?
The chairman of the finance committee asked us to send her ideas on how to grapple with this budget. I did it. I'd like to be able to share those ideas.
Thank you, Liz. I would appreciate if you would reiterate what you had sent council. I did read it, and I am definitely supportive of everything that you wrote. Did anybody else do it, or was I the only one?
You were the only one that I received an email from. Oh, other than, I, I take that back. I had, I know how some of the people feel through texts. Okay, and just a reminder, since we've had an interesting national news breaking about text messages, council should be aware that text messages are subject to the Right to Know Act, so I hope there's no Mark Meadows here. All right. Per the preliminary budget for 2022, the quarterly cost per household for refuse service would be $7 or $70, an increase of $4.75 per quarter, or $19 per year. We already went through the numbers that Paul gave on how those fees are supposed to go up every year for the next five years. Per the preliminary budget for 2022, the quarterly cost per household for sewer service would be $79.86, an increase of $3.31 per quarter. In other words, council will be rejecting a plan under which the two rates would increase by $32.24 per year in 2022, in favor of a plan that would raise the two rates by $69.40 per year in 2023. That's a big hit. That is why our financial consultant had recommended regular, small increases, rather than hitting households with big increases every few years. Without the refuse fee increase, I recommend that the city cut services to make up for the revenue gap. We should drop the electronics recycling event, or we could charge residents for the electronics event, as Mill Creek and Erie County do, although I think Erie County even postponed theirs this year. Or perhaps we could contract with Erie County for an electronics event, but city residents would pay to participate. Same thing for mulch pickup. Mill Creek and Fairview residents drive their mulching items to a mulch center for drop-off. We could institute a plan in which Erie residents drive their mulching items to the mulch plant at the wastewater treatment plant. The year-round bag item pickup should be reduced to a short time in the spring, as previously done. In addition, we should restructure recycling, unless we are prohibited by state law. Pittsburgh is going to ban single-use plastic bags. We might be able to do that now, now that a state moratorium on such laws has expired. The next thing I'm going to say is going to be controversial. It doesn't mean that I support this, but I don't see any other way out of this. For 2023, city councils should seriously explore outsourcing refuse service. The PFM study projected that this, there would not be a huge advantage to outsourcing, but city, city council historically has opposed instituting the refuse fee and then has historically opposed raising the fee to keep up with increased operating costs. Our rates for municipal garbage pickup are comparable or lower than surrounding municipalities. Mill Creek is an exception, but its provider tried to reopen its five-year contract because of rising disposal rates for recyclables. Mill Creek supervisors refused to reopen the contract, but I suspect that rates will increase when a new contract goes out to bid. Mill Creek, Harbor Creek, and Fairview all give residents the option to buy bags and save money on pickup. The cost of 33-gallon bags is currently $27.50 for five bags in Fairview and Harbor Creek, and $4.50 per bag in Mill Creek, where you must buy bags in quantities of four or 10. The bag-buying option would appeal to seniors and others who produce little waste because they could actually reduce their garbage bills. Outsourcing may be the only way to demonstrate to city residents that our refuse fees are reasonable in this region. For the sewer rate increase, we already went through what the suburbs are paying in terms of sewers' rates. And I do believe that there are pockets of extreme poverty in places other than the City of Erie. So that, that shouldn't be the, the objection being thrown out here. We could examine the raises for every management employee in the proposed budget. Most raises are less than 2%. Some people will remember that a few years ago, I wanted to actually freeze raises, but everyone objected to that. But there is one position in the budget that's getting an 11% raise. Another one's due for a 4% increase. Another one's due for a four percent increase. I haven't gone through all of them. They could, but that's that's still pennies, that's or dollars. It's not the million that we're gonna need or more than a million for uh, revenue. Um, I did propose another uh, cut a year ago, got no support for it, but in light of a proposal to raise uh, to to approve higher pay for city council members, perhaps we should consider dropping health insurance for the part-time employees who are city council. I proposed that. I got nowhere. I think it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we budget for health insurance for city council. Still doesn't get us to the million six. That's what I have to say.
It doesn't seem as if we did bags and at the prices that they're being sold at at the other municipalities, that it would be very beneficial to um. Or that much more cost-effective than the service that uh, is already being received.
Michael, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
And Liz is absolutely correct about the municipalities to do that, but but again, going back to the expenses, the expenditures that we have in that fund, the tipping fees are not gonna go down. The same amount of tonnage is still going to go up to the landfill. If if I become a per-bag person, we're still gonna have the same expenses. So me as a per-bag person, um, the mayor as a quarterly, yourself as a quarterly, we're still gonna have the same amount of expenses. So we are gonna be very helpful to the person that doesn't use any garbage, but then everyone else is gonna have to make up, they're gonna have to make up that dollar. But as Liz said, I mean, we're so much less than everybody else, you know, if if the money's gotta come from somewhere. So I guess that's my two cents on that.
Paul, can I?
Yes.
Liz mentioned the electronic uh, pickup or that drop-off. What's that?
We spend about we spend about fifty thousand dollars a year on that.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, you know, last year sixty, the year before four, fifty grand.
And our large item pickup are.
It's been very, very successful.
But what's that cost uh?
Dollar-wise, well, we shifted some things where we have a couple guys that go out on a daily basis to pick up large items as opposed to bringing people in for the whole month of May.
I mean, put it this way, is there more tonnage doing it year-round than having a set time?
The tonnage that we've that we've had at the land, yes, it's gone up.
So, you know, so, yeah, I'm.
So that's why I'm saying it's a it's a successful, it's a successful program. We've cleaned the city up.
Ab- absolutely agree with um, I don't agree with uh, giving less services. Uh, but I would say that, you know, when you go around the city, you see maybe landlords or people moving who are using, you know, uh, the refuge for obvious uh, home cleanouts. And I think, and I know those guys aren't here today, but I think that we should start a home cleanout fee. Like, hey, we'll still pick up your trash, or you can still use us as opposed to the dumpster if you only need a mini dumpster, but you know, but the fee is three hundred dollars or something like that, that, you know, where it will drive revenue and we can, you know, cuz I've seen also where vacant homes are not on the list of pickup. And so their stuff will sit out there week after week after week, and so they should be able to call and say, hey, I'm cleaning out this house, I'm moving, you know, if it's three hundred bucks, it's three hundred bucks. I'll pay my three hundred bucks. Could you please, you know, pick up the trash in front of this house? And I think that that's one way we can drive some revenue and put more revenue into that uh, you know, our refuse.
Do we pay the, I mean, maybe three, four years ago, we, I think we set aside like roughly a hundred thousand dollars for large item. Um, I just, and I know just having a year-round, are we paying more having a year-round, or trucks get more wear and tear going there more often, or how do we?
Yeah, I I I don't wanna quote you a number, but the trucks go out every day. Um, same amount of trucks, though. We just have one dedicated truck where when we had the May pickup, there was going back to seventeen and before, there was still a truck that went out and as as Michael's talking about people throwing stuff out, we still had a truck that went out on a daily basis and picked things up. I mean, because you can't let, and I think Mrs. Schoff has brought up some alleyways and stuff. I've I've I know you've listened, talked in the past about, you know, we still have to clean that stuff up. So.
I mean, and I guess in the end game, this isn't so much more for this budget for twenty twenty-two, but I guess it may be something to look for into the future to the extent of maybe we can save a few bucks here to help offset potential increases or potential tipping.
Maybe Michael's idea about, you know, the the instead of me renting a dumpster, paying the city three hundred dollars may be something good. But the fact is, in order to keep the city clean, we're gonna have to pick this garbage up, and the tipping fees are gonna be what the tipping fees are.
David, did you want to say anything? Mayor Joe, am I correct in saying you didn't want property taxes raised until twenty twenty-four or five?
Yes, we were trying to get five years without any increase in property or income tax.
So would you have to increase the property tax sooner if we say no to the fees?
It's very possible. Uh, whether it'll happen that way or not, who knows, but uh, we have less in our back pocket to prevent that from happening i- if we do that.
And a question to Paul as the finance, property taxes are more than the fees that would be in the sewer and that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
I think, in my opinion, that we're sort of kicking the can down the road. I would rather not pay higher property taxes, I would rather pay the fees. Do you see what I'm saying, council?
Yeah, I I don't disagree that we need revenue or we need revenue replacement. So where I'm at is I don't think we've done a thorough job on all the things that we could reimburse ourselves that qualified under the CARES Act or under the ARP funding. And that's why I'm a no, because if there's things that we can reimburse ourselves for, let's pay ourselves first, use the money to help the city first. And we've given a lot of money to a lot of other agents and things, but uh, that's neither here nor there. Let's use it to help ourselves first. Whatever we can find that's reinvert reimbursable, let's let's do it. Let's, you know, spend the time going through everybody's budget, seeing what we can re- we can reimburse and see what it adds up to.
The bottom line is, if we wanna pass the budget tonight, we need to take a million three, roundabout figures, out of the out of the budget. Uh, Paul, you have any ideas? Do we give you ideas? Art money?
There is revenue replacement available, and there's also, I mean, we've talked, we've talked about this at budget sessions. There's revenue replacement available. We have the water lease prepayment money. Um, Mr. Winarski's got a couple million in his back pocket. I had to tell another joke, okay.
Uh, I'm sorry to, but I'm sorry for interrupting, but um, so I've been watching the news and have watched the devastation of the tornadoes that have hit in Kentucky, and truthfully, we could have a huge tornado. Things are crazy out there. So what happens then if our town is devastated like the other towns that I'm watching on television?
We get federal money like they will get.
Well, that's not so, if you really wanna know the truth, that's why, you know, by the end of the today, the plan would be, you know, all seventy-six million dollars would be allocated and bucketed. The the, your answer would be to hold on to some of that money. Uh, and for whatever for, you know, we have till twen- two thousand twenty-five to buck or to spend it, two thousand twenty-six, is to hold on to some of that money. The money doesn't have to be gone by today. Um, so is to hold on to that money until we see what the best thing to spend it on, because what we think today may not be the same thing next year. We could have, we have had an earthquake here. You know what I mean? And 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 so uh, the the best, you know, and so I agree with, you know, your 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 line of questioning, but I, but that's the best thing we can do is have what we, the money we have in the bank and then money that we have that can be allocated or can be helpful in a situation like that. Those are about the only things we can do.
But isn't the ARP funding related to COVID? We 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 may well have really bad, you know, climate change-related weather. I think we witnessed it on Saturday on the bay. I have no idea what that did to the stormwater management, but of course, we decided we aren't gonna pass a stormwater fee. So I think that we have hired people to look at what's um, legal to use the ARP funding for. I don't see how we could say, well, somewhere down the road, we might, uh, unless, of course, the fact is that the pandemic is continuing, so if we have something pandemic-related, but but I don't see how I don't see how that gets us uh, any help for the twenty twenty-two budget.
Paul, if I if I could ask you again, Paul, I know we talked about this many times in past discussions about the, how could we um, the the citizens who benefit, who live outside the city, how can we kind of share, you know, cuz they're they're they they had paid their fair share of of the utilities. Um, you know, with sewer system, uh, with with uh, people who work in the city, you know, benefit from working in the city and live outside the city. Um, kinda just paying their fair share, cuz we, you know, everyone who lives in a city, of course, we're paying premium. We live in the city, we're paying taxes, school district, et cetera. Is is there anything, I know that I've asked a question many times, I know you've said there's legal issues with doing that.
Well, the legal.
But I'm I'm just looking to see if we could challenge that so that we could um, make sure we're paying for our systems uh, and 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 those who benefit from.
Well, we we raised the income tax that we're allowed to charge the people that live outside the city and work in the city. So that's maximized at this point in time. Council passed that ordinance two, three years ago, three years ago to go to the one where we went from one point one eight to one point six five percent on your earned income. Uh, the the sewer, as you're talking about, um, the sewer rate increase or or increasing what we charged the seven municipalities that use the wastewater treatment plant would have to be negotiated with a sit-down with those seven uh, municipalities, DEP, Environmental Protection Agency, and I know there's someone else, and I can't think of the contract off the top of my head, but you have to get everyone to sit down and agree, and and David, you've brought it up. We've all talked about the fact that, you know, that's our business, we're running the business, and we're not getting, you know, we're not.
Say there's a, you know, the the everyone benefits from the city. If they live a healthy city, all the municipalities around us who use our infrastructure benefit. So that's why I'm looking at that, cuz you you see the value there.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, if we have we have a healthy sewer system, then everyone benefits from it. So that's that's why I keep edging on and I keep bringing it up, um, trying to find a way to.
Yeah, it would be, it would somehow, we'd have to get seven municipalities and the three agencies to all sit down and agree to do it.
Let's do it.
I I you're abso- I mean, because as we've said, I mean, we had Basil here, he's at two o'clock in the morning on a Saturday night, he's the one that has to get up and make sure that plant's working. Um, nobody out in Fairview is. So they pay no premium to us for what for what they're getting from us. So, yeah, it unfortunately, you know, nineteen sixty-two or whatever year that was, we didn't get, we didn't get a fairness.
Yeah, I'm sure there could be a spreadsheet created that says, here's how much it costs to operate the system, how much we're getting, here's the benefit you get.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, David, a hundred percent.
One more thing.
A hundred and one percent, really.
Yeah, it's showing. So uh, did we uh, seek or get reimbursement for the security system?
At at this moment in time, we have the money that you approved for the revenue replacement for the ARP money. Um, the mayor and I are gonna sit down and figure out what to do with the money that we have.
It's already been replaced.
Yeah.
In the infrastructure?
Yes, and as the mayor just said, we've already taken the money out of the ARP bank account and moved it in to one that, you know, that's separate, separated.
So could that, um, so I know it can't be used for re- re- revenue replacement, but if we were to charge off that one, that nine hundred thousand dollars, wouldn't that make us a lot closer? If we did that like between now or in the upcoming year?
The one thing if you have to, you you remember is we're talking about not having, you know, and I bring it up every year, and I talk ad nauseam about the fact that we need to have money in the bank. Um, when we did that and we put in the security system, you know, we took a million dollars out of the the Capital Bank account where we're down around a half a million dollars. So, you know, replacing that is, it would be helpful to us. And that's why the mayor asked us to put, and council approved that a month or so ago, where we put that money, we took the money out of the ARP. The the amount that our auditor said was equal to the revenue replacement, and we moved it out of there into where it can be spent, um, you know, and we'll put a plan together.
Paul, let's just say we take money from the ARP. Then, does that lower our B plus 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 rating if we don't have any more money?
The bond rating, um, uh, no, I I can't say it's it's gonna help it, it's gonna hurt it, it's gonna do anything. The bond rating, i- if you sat through that, they ask you questions about how your finances are going, what you're doing, how how you're doing things. Um, you know, the mayor has always got a strong management performance on how we're doing things on those standard and course reports, and uh, there's a multitude of things, Kathy, and that they ask about.
But if, let's say we we say no fees this year, won't we be dipping into something, though?
Yes, we would have to.
Man, Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to make a comment before before the meeting starts. I really believe the best thing to do for the city is to pass the budget as it was presented to you, I believe. And again, looking at just more than just one year over the long term, four to five years, that's gonna be the keep our taxes at the lowest possible level and fees that people are paying. However, if we don't have four votes to do that, then what I'd suggest, if we need, what, one point three million total? To, you know, to cover the the revenue we're giving up, I would suggest we have that the Water Authority prepayment, which we kind of set aside. The purpose of that is to avoid a tax increase for at least five years. Uh, but I would suggest if you're not willing to vote for the fees we have in the budget, that you move one point three million of the Water Authority money into the general fund for.
Mayor, can we clarify that we need a supermajority for that? Is that correct, or no, you don't?
I don't think so.
All right, I'm voting against that, though.
No, Liz, that would be the the water, um, the water reserve fund. This this is money when we got the ninety-five million from the Water Authority. We put, uh, we remember we used eighty million of it to pay down debt. Well, we set aside fifteen million. The first year, we put three point five million into into the regular general fund bank account, and now there's eleven million of it sitting in a mu- in a money market account, earning a little better interest. Um, but we would, it would come from actually eleven point six.
But then if Kathy had. But then as Kathy had said, that would affect the farther projections on property tax increases.
As the mayor said, it possibly could. I mean, there's a multitude of things, you know, that go into the budget. There's it's this could go up, that could go down. It a- a- where we're sitting, if you use historical information, it's possible three, four years from now, it could have a negative effect on that budget.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Paul?
Yes.
Move to one point three, amend the budget, and we pass it tonight.
You guys have to do that. You have to pass a resolution to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you give us the budget?
Nope. There's nothing more to give you. You're making changes to what we gave. What we recommend is what we gave you. You're making changes to it, so you have to pass those resolutions
Right.
to do that. We don't have to give you anything more.
Mayor Joe, I am for what the administration is saying because I would rather have the fees than the property tax next year.
Yeah. One of the things that we we do have to realize is that, you know, just like everything else, which we're in municipality and we run off of taxpayer money. And if the taxpayers' income isn't increasing, which we've seen, you know what I mean, then it's, you know, then it becomes whether it's 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 moral to say, okay, we have to increase everything every year. That's just the way it goes, even if, you know, like we had a pandemic and people didn't work last year, or you know what I mean? And so it's, I don't, we have to find a way to generate more revenue and that's, I guess, the key. Uh, and I'm open to any suggestions that we may or may or may not have.
I guess what I'd like to see you do tonight is vote on the budget that we've presented. If it's voted down, then you need to amend it by making a resolution to eliminate the two fees and to take one point three million from the uh the money in the Water Authority prepayment.
Two fees aren't in there now, Mayor. They aren't.
Well, they're in the budget.
They're only presented to you. You're voting on the budget, yeah.
I didn't ask.
Paul, can I just ask one question? Kathy was worried that our property taxes would go up next year or the following year if we tap into the lease money. We should be, I mean, I know we're still looking years down the road, but that should not affect anything in twenty twenty-three or four.
It's.
If we said five years or the.
Right, we had twenty twenty, we used the first batch of money, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Kathy, it's I, you know, it's possible there could be a negative effect in twenty-four.
Can I just say I'd like to welcome the three new city council members who are in the audience because guess what? Right now, without, before we move that money, and I know that you've all studied the budget, in twenty twenty-five, there's a projected deficit of six point zero one nine million. And in twenty twenty-six, a projected deficit of eight point seven million. So, welcome to City Council.
We'll fix it.
And the other thing I wanted to say, I forgot to say it because I didn't put it on my green notes there, was that again, we're being asked to raise City Council pay for, not for those who are currently on here, but for the future. I had suggested that it would be better that we would take some of that money and hire a an independent part-time financial consultant to help City Council with the budget so that we aren't here on December fifteenth monkeying around with a budget that we got on November sixth. This happens every year. None of us are financial experts. I'm looking forward to having new council members on here with a fresh eye, but I think it'd be really helpful to do what County Council does, which is to have an independent person to help. So we aren't throwing numbers at the hard-working administration here at the last minute. It's seven thirty.
Five-minute or three-minute?
Three.
Three-minute break and we'll start our meeting. Thank you.
Hey, Lori.
Sorry for a light start, folks, but situation normal.
City Council meeting of Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven forty-five PM. Mr. Rosinsky, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Stand for silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
A moment of silence and Ms. Allen?
We're going to ask for, uh, in particular, to remember, uh, former Erie Police Chief Steve Franklin, who is remembered not just for his work at the Police Department, but for his longtime uh service to uh Boys and Girls Baseball. And also, um, we lost another, a former police officer, Jack Martin, who uh ran for mayor a couple of times, and he also was a former WJET newsman. Yeah, Jack Anderson, I'm sorry, Jack Anderson. So.
Let's not forget the tornado of victims in Kentucky and surrounding areas. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the City Council meeting of December first, twenty twenty-one, and bills for payment December seventeenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Rosinsky. We have a presentation. Start with uh Council President Rosinsky. Keys, if you want to come down and Mr. You get to present. I hear the vice president.
Here's me.
Don't speak now. Speak later.
Good news, thank you.
Um, Mr. Black, Mr. Renad Rosinsky, City Council President, year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Kathy and Jim, could you guys come down? Oh, the camera. Who, can we move that?
I'd rather delay, but this would be here a long time anyway. David, let me give you yours. Kathy, yours and Jimmy.
Thank you.
Three great folks that we had a lot of fun working with. Uh, we're going to lose a lot of uh background in the city with Jim going to the county and our folks here. Uh, we'll continue to work. We're going to have Kathy still with the New Relations Commission and Dave with the National Historic. So they're not going away. Uh, we thank you for all your service and uh think about ten thousand in four years or whatever it is. I won't air, but you'll have a good time doing it. Okay?
Thank you.
You guys want to say anything?
Go that way. Go that way.
Go that way.
Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anybody to speak for a repository? Anybody to speak for a repository? We can now go into the public comments part of the meeting. This is not the public hearing yet. Um, we're going to start with the people online.
Uh, let me interfere for a second. Uh, if you're going to speak about the Airbnb waiting till we have the hearing. If you have any other issues that you wish to speak to, this is the time to do it. Uh, folks here or folks online. Uh, hopefully, everybody understands what we're saying, okay? Thank you.
I.
Let me go online first, Frank. Is that what we're doing?
No.
Okay.
Please state your name and address clearly for the record.
This is Freda Tepper, seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. This is Freda Tepper, seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. Is that, can you hear me okay? Oh dear, okay. Is this still an echo?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a few things I wanted to talk about. You show five million dollars for parks. And in addition to this, there was the streetscape item in the last meeting. There should really be between this project and the previously approved streetscape project provision for a restroom in Perry Square. It's about time that we do that. We've just put benches in Perry Square. We just put them in Perry Square for the convenience of the Erie Downtown Development Corporation's food hall. We should accommodate the people who frequent downtown, including people like myself, who would like to have access to an accessible restroom year-round. Also, in the area of this downtown streetscape project as well as the parks, it was an oversight that there are, especially around Perry Square, in the twelfth and thirteenth and State and Eleventh and French, there are traffic signals that can easily accommodate an accessible pedestrian signal. As part of this project, those signals should be made into accessible pedestrian signals. It was not appropriate for those signals to be upgraded without putting in accessible pedestrian signal. I would like to urge the City Council to direct Public Works or the Planning Commission, whoever has to do this, to develop regulations around sidewalk closures so that only the closures that are absolutely necessary happen and for the shortest possible amount of time. We have had sidewalk closures on the church at Tenth and SAS for weeks, months, and that unless there is no way a sidewalk bypass could be provided, they should be required. And we have seen examples on State Street where sidewalk bypasses can be added. This should be part of the permit process, and there should be a fee for it. Those applying for a construction or other permit should provide all this information and pay a fee when they close a sidewalk. Not raising the sewer and the solid waste fees is not a prudent thing to do. It'll just make things more expensive in the long run. And fees are payable by everybody, whereas taxes are not. We need to cover the actual cost of doing business. And I do want to say I recycle my glass at the Food Co-op, and there are several places where you can recycle your glass. Michael Keys talked about raising revenue. One way that we can be raising more revenue is that when we are doing things that require permits, we should charge for those permits something to cover the inspection. We're not doing that right now. We should be doing that. Maybe we should be charging fees for commercial snow removal permits. We should be able to cover the cost of doing business more. And as we go into the snow removal season, we need to have a better respect for pedestrians. We need the businesses, the churches, the governments to not block their sidewalks when they're clearing their driveways and parking lots, and that businesses should continuously clear the sidewalks. It's not a one-time thing. West Twelfth Street is never accessible the entire winter, and that should not be allowed to happen. And thank you for your time.
I'm guessing that was Freda. Could you state your name and address, please?
Well, I didn't give it. It's Freda Tepper, seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street, Erie, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Freda. Right?
Deborah Petrov?
Hello?
Thank you.
I really don't have a comment. I'm just listening. I thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Olds? Emily Olds?
Ms. Olds?
Maybe she's for the public hearing.
She may have been speaking on the Airbnb.
Possibly. Holly Montalvo? Holly? Lisa Lawrence?
I was just here in support of the Airbnb.
Thank you. Sheila Wagner? Emily? You have to unmute yourself.
How many more don't we have, Frank?
Hello?
Yes.
David and Ed.
My name is Matt Olds. I live at eighty-four Clark Avenue in Ocean Grove, New Jersey, and I just wanted to speak in support of the Airbnb resolution allowing.
Sorry, sir, you didn't hear, but we're not taking this on a comment. You can speak at the public hearing later. Thank you. Anybody, any audience need to speak on anything other than Airbnb? One down.
My name is Craig Hayes. I own North Coast Flight School. I sit on the Erie Airport Authority, whatever, you know, the rest. But the one thing I will say more than anything else is whatever.
Mr. Hayes, could you give your address, please?
Sixteen, or five seven five five Gibson Hill Road, but I do business in Erie. The one thing that did come to mind to me with the first comment that we were talking about public restrooms for Perry Square, I did the Downtown Delights for ten years. I was there every year, went through everything that we went through, all the unique experiences that we had every year. Remember, if we do provide that, which I'm sure would be, in a perfect world, we'd all be very happy with that. But we're also responsible for the safety of what we see that happens in those restrooms. So keep in mind, there is an expense, there is an oversight that would come along with that. So that is something, from my experience being down there for ten years and doing that, I find it would be a rather daunting task to make it safe. And that's just for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Council. John Whaley, four forty-seven Gordon Lane. That's in the city of Erie. I'm going to pass around a couple of pictures, because I have a feeling most of you have never been to Gordon Lane. You couldn't find it on the map, and our Streets Department cannot find it no matter what we do. So the last time it snowed, we never got a plow. We got three inches of snow, we never got a plow. It took umpteen calls, texts, shaming on social media. Finally, the day that it was like forty-four degrees, we got a plow. So you're up here worried about how fast can you spend ARP money? How many new fees can we introduce? But you are not, administration is not handling their business. I'd like my street plow once in a while. We have a code enforcement office, we have a neighborhood resource that's been renamed. I got a guy in Glenwood Parking City, his work trucks up and down the street. One axle broken, can't get anybody to come up and do anything. Finally, talked to Mr., oh, the Ma Sela, and he sent up the police, apparently, and they got him to move them for one day, and then the next day they're back. We have ordinances, we have code enforcement people, we have zoning people. I don't know what they do all day. One of your budget items is, again, in racing to give away ARP money, someone suggested giving the Eagles Nest leadership six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, they're asking to know on the grant application, which would be great if you would make that available. What are they going to spend the money on? When you look up their nine nineties, six seventy-five is more than the last three years of revenue that that organization has brought in. Could they get by with a hundred and fifty or two twelve or some other number? There are two executive directors of that organization. Together, the two of them took sixteen percent of all revenues last year as their salary. So what do they really do? What do they want the money for? How are they going to make the city better? So I wasn't here to hear you talk about the budget. Hopefully, you're going to not approve the sewer and garbage fees. We already overcharge residents two point two million dollars a year for those services. It goes into those funds, you take it and put it in the general fund. I think the administration and council should man up and just raise taxes. Stop pretending you're not raising taxes. Stop pretending that fees are okay and that Social Security is going to cover the increases. And the lady up there on the phone is talking about how do we manage? We have to run the city, we have to pay for it. I have a budget back there, I'd be happy to go over with any of you. One of the pages is the municipal garage, and we have two radio technicians. And I would argue that fifty-two weeks of the year, five days a week, we don't have enough work for two full-time people. One worker makes sixty-four thousand dollars plus benefits, one worker makes sixty-two nine forty-one. So with benefits and salary, you've got two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for radio repair. That's four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars a week. Could you outsource that to somebody and have somebody come in as needed to fix these radios? How many radios do we have? Can you even fix a radio, or you just throw it away and buy a new one? So you can't find any money anywhere. Give me any page of the budget, I'll find you some money. You gloss over how much work is done and what we need or why we have it. I worked in City Hall fifteen years ago. I'll bet you both of those workers have more than five weeks of vacation. You need two people to cover a one-man job. There's that much time off, sick time, vacation time. So if you think we can afford forty-four hundred dollars a week for radio repair in an average house in the city of Erie that costs a hundred thousand dollars pays fourteen hundred in city taxes. So every single week, all the money from three houses goes to radio repair. You could slice the budget by millions of dollars, provide better service, and still get the job done. So anybody wants to find Gordon Lane, I'd love to show it to you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. I guess we have to go to a public hearing to stay in tune with our timing. We're on dock at eight o'clock, and we're a couple minutes late as usual. Straight up, I got eight o'clock. Mr. Bessa, we have you take over the public hearing.
That's fine. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss short-term rentals. And just so we're clear on what we're talking about, we've had already a public hearing. Council's also had a study session, and we've had many people over the past several months, almost over a year, talking about it at public hearings or public meetings. But council directed the, I'm going to give you a little bit of background. Council directed the Planning Commission to take a look at short-term rentals and see how they would fit within the city with the general direction that we wanted to have some provision to allow for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals would be a rental of a residential property for a period less than thirty days. So we're not talking about rentals for anything beyond that. You can rent your house for a longer period. We're just talking about short-term rentals such as Airbnb or VRBO, and there's some other companies, but those are the two main ones. The Planning Commission came back with a proposed ordinance that council reviewed, and that ordinance had a number of provisions in it. And we held a public hearing, and we also held a study session with council discussing it. After all of that occurred, council received comments, and they made a change from the Planning Commission's ordinance. And so let's talk about what was in the ordinance. It allowed short-term rentals in residential properties. It also allowed short-term rentals in other properties as well. But the big issue seems to be residential. The Planning Commission had recommended that there be a provision in the residential properties that you had to be owner-occupied, meaning that you would have to live in the house for more than half of the year, and you could only rent it out for less than half of the year. And that was the original draft. Council received a number of comments requesting that that provision be removed. And so council approved at its first reading a removal of that provision. After that occurred, there was a number of residents that contacted different representatives in the city saying, hey, I liked that provision being in there, and I'd like to have an opportunity to be heard to see if we can put that provision back in there. So the perp, council has agreed to hold a second public hearing, which is somewhat unusual, but with there being some very divergent views, council wanted to hear from everybody. So if you have a comment that, hey, short-term rentals are great or short-term rentals are bad, by all means, you can make that comment or that testimony tonight. But councils heard, they know what short-term rentals are. The biggest issue I think that council's grappling with tonight is whether or not there should be a provision in the ordinance that says the properties must be owner-occupied. And just to be clear, what that means is if it has to be owner-occupied, and I have eight houses in the city that I own, I can only rent out one of them, the one I live in. That, the good side of that is that that might limit the, if you want to limit it, that might limit the number of short-term rentals. Other people have said, hey, if I own eight properties, why can't I rent them all out? And so you would be, if you pass that provision, you might be negatively reflecting the ability or affecting someone's ability to make money. Both positions have good logic, but the question for council that they're stuck with and that we want to hear from you is what's better for the city of Erie? And so with that, council's well aware of short-term rentals. They're probably burned out of short-term rentals. But I want to make it very clear, this is a big issue. Should that provision be in it? Meaning, again, you have to live in your home, you can rent out one, and you have to live in it more than half of the year. Or should that provision be removed, meaning you can rent out your home year-round? Or you could rent out two or three homes? That's a big issue for council that they're trying to deal with, and so they would like to hear from the public on that. So anyone wishing to offer testimony about short-term rentals, I would ask, this is a budget time, but please keep the comments direct and to the point. Council's not going to debate the issue, but we want to hear from you any testimony that you have to offer. My understanding is we're going to start with people online. And so everyone will have an opportunity to be heard. But again, I just ask, please be short and to the point to the extent that you can. Thank you.
Right?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, good job. Also, because this is a legal proceeding, it's informal, but it's still a legal proceeding, anyone wishing to offer testimony must be sworn. So at this point, whether you're online or whether you're here and you're thinking, ah, I might, I might say something. So at this point, whether you're online or whether you're here and you're thinking, ah, I might, I might say something, maybe or maybe not. If you think you might, please stand and raise your right hand. If you're at home, please stand and raise your right hand. It'd be a little fun, and the court reporter will swear you in.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Name and address?
Hi, it's, I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear. Here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, uh, my name is Holly Montalvo. My address is eighty-five oh four Southwest Eighty-First Terrace, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-four-three. Um, and I would just like to speak, um, in favor of the short-term rentals Airbnb. I've given my spiel a couple of times, but, um, I was born and raised in Erie. I currently live in Miami, but like to visit, um, every year with my family. And because we're a family of four and we also bring our pet, uh, the short-term rentals are very helpful, um, and cost effective for us. You know, like I said, because I was born and raised there, I love to bring my family to experience, um, all that Erie has to offer. Um, it's an annual trip for us and we really enjoy it, and we really enjoy staying in short-term rentals. Thank you.
Me Olds? Hello, this is Mattles, my address is eighty-four Clark Avenue, Ocean Grove, New Jersey. Um, I've also been listening the last few months to, uh, the Airbnb hearings that have been coming, and I also would like to speak in, in favor of, uh, the short-term rentals as well as removing the clause that states you have to live in the residence for more than half the time. Um, you know, uh, my wife and I both grew up in Erie and we enjoy still going back to visit family, but with our five children and numerous pets, it's much easier to be in a short-term rental versus, uh, versus a hotel. So, um, and also, I mean, it's just, it's interesting on a night that there's budget meetings and, um, you know, dividing up the pie. Having more people renting out their houses is just more revenue and higher property values, I would think, for the city of Erie, so I think it would be a win all around. Thank you.
You.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name, did you, Susan? Okay. That's just Mr. Olds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Deborah Petro?
I have no comment, thank you, I'm just listening.
Lisa Lawrence?
Hello, um, so I'm joining in, I misstated, I'm not really in support of, I'm calling in regards to, I do have an Airbnb that's on our block, and my concern with it has been my con- excuse me?
Name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, Lisa Lawrence, seven zero seven Shenley Drive.
I do.
Okay, so we've had someone in the neighborhood who's lived here thirty years that have recently moved to Fairview because of the noise, so I know these locations are not supposed to disturb the peace, and I just feel like there may not be enforcement for some of the rules that are in place. So I would express a concern for that, if you're thinking through these and you're going to add more layers to it, like owners having to live in it, you know, just thinking through the process of enforcement. And I do know that it, it was a disappointment to lose a neighbor that we did because they were, they were helpful to others, they helped take care of the median that was there, things like that, so just a concern about the enforcement and again, the disturbance to the peace, which many of us work from home now. Um, that's the end, thank you.
Thank you. Sheila? You have to unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'm in favor of the, uh, short-term rentals with no restrictions.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Sheila Woger, twenty-eleven Fairmount Parkway, Erie, Pennsylvania. Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, I was just, I'm in favor of the short-term rentals with no restrictions. As far as you having to be a resident of the property.
Does that conclude your comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, and also, uh, I am not in favor of the almost, it was over a million dollars as being allocated, well, as being granted to the Eagles Nest. Uh, there-
This is a public, this is a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll continue with citizens to be heard, you can stay online when we revert back to the citizens' comments.
All right, thank you, I'm finished, thank you.
All right, so if you're, if, if you're here in the audience and you wish to offer testimony, uh, please come forward to the podium. Uh, you will need to give your name and address. Uh, and then again, please give us your testimony and please be brief and to the point.
Come on down.
Let it go.
Go ahead, sir. Uh, my name is Benjamin Henry. Uh, my address is twelve oh seven Peach Street. Um, so I've been operating Airbnbs for about three years, um, short-term rentals, excuse me. Um, the issue I have with the, the kind of reinstatement of this rule with owner, with it needing to be owner occupied is that if I operate multiple Airbnbs, um, I understand that it's only an R1, is that correct? It's only R1 and R1A for this restriction, okay? Um, it seems to me that there would just be a lot of question about enforceability and I could already think of multiple ways that someone could get around this rule or, or make it hard to figure out that this is going on. So I think that the focus should be more on the real concerns that, uh, you know, might have to do with, with noise or, or parking or things like this that, that could be more intelligently written into the rules or more intelligently written into how it is enforced. Because I think what, you know, what matters here is that everyone gets along and gets what they want. Um, another thing is that HOAs have the ability to govern neighborhoods specifically in R1. Um, and for the people that are, uh, very much against this, they really should be looking to go that route instead of writing it into the zoning. Um, and the reason I say that is because this brings in more tax revenue for the city. And I think we all know, and if anyone was listening, that this is a, uh, an always issue for the city. Um, so I did a quick calculation just for reference. Um, there's a site that tracks statistics related to, uh, short-term rentals and just off the top of my head, I think it's something like, there's already a hundred and sixty-six rentals, um, short-term rentals. Actually, only, uh, only thirty-eight percent of those are full-time, meaning the majority are al- already le, uh, not full-time year-round available. So it's somewhat redundant to make that in the rules. Um, but this should be, if the taxes collected properly, bringing in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, um, just from short-term rentals. So my, my argument is just that if we encourage this and we make our city a safe place to do this, and we focus on doing it in a safe way, that this would bring in more money for the city, this would bring more business to the city, and, uh, particularly more young people, which we all, I think, want. So that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Well, my name's Susan Morse, and I live at forty-seven oh six Upland Drive. Um, I, I feel like you all know me. This conflict's been going on for four years, and during that time, we've heard from several homeowners expressing their concerns. Uh, most of them have been in objections, those that have come that live in Glenwood. I, not all of them, but I suspect that most of them. They had a very, very false narrative and a very negative narrative on the, on how the Airbnbs go. A lot of it focused on the fear, the fear of what can happen to a neighborhood and not what's actually happened. We've heard the discussions from drug running to child abuse to frat parties, there's not enough parking on the street. Um, we've also heard from things that have happened, like we don't like their barbecues, we don't want to watch them take their roches in their house, you know, all the way to, you know, geez, we, we just don't want rentals. And the city's done their job. In the case of Glenwood, they have not done their job. You know, this came from the Ha, the Hamilton versus the Slice of Life. And this, this was a ruling that gave municipalities the time to write their ordinance. And that's what you all have done, the due diligence, um, that you've done to do this, to put the language in the ordinance to include Airbnbs. And it was a thoughtful process. The elimination or the addition to the restrictions on owner occupied basically knocks out almost everybody. Now, for a lot of people who live here and may go to Florida for some of the year, it might work if they're in Florida two or three months, but for people who need the income and people who rely on it, who buy a property, take care of it, and maybe live in the house four months out of the year and contribute to the city, it, it's really not, not a great thing. Um, for Glenwood, the lack of the leadership on their HO, HOA board has been that this should have gone back to the HOA. They can make, just like you guys went and changed the language in your ordinance, they can change the language in their homeowners. This is what people all over the country are doing. Everybody's, all cities are dealing with this. And it should go back to the homeowners if that's, if that's what they want to do. Now, I've had the opportunity to talk to a few neighbors, and the two biggest issues that they have is that their real estate values will fall or that investors will come in and turn properties into Airbnbs and ruin the culture of the neighborhood. Um, as far as the property values, I would dispute that even from past testimonies. My house is up thirty-five percent in two years. The house on the other side of me sold in twenty nineteen for a hundred and forty-nine thousand because it was an estate sale and they needed a fast sale. Zillow has that at two hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's up forty percent in three years. House on the other side of me sold last year for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. People lined up and down the street to buy that house. And it was in a tax sale, it was an estate sale, and the house was, the house was deep. Now, they've come and fixed it up, the house is listed at two forty-five, that's a ninety percent increase. No home in Glenwood has depreciated because there's an Airbnb. That's, that's just a fact. Investors buying, I'm not sure they would do that. Um, but the fact is they can stop this, they can stop people from coming in and investors by changing the language in their homeowners. But Glenwood wants to impose or, or have council with the planning commission and the zoning board to do their job. They can rewrite the homeowner document. That was something I had suggested to them in the very beginning. Um, so with that, I want to thank city council members for creating an ordinance of inclusiveness that reflects our city and its values for all citizens in all the neighborhoods. You did your due diligence using the resources of the zoning board and the planning commission. So please vote for the ordinance and send the objectors back to their neighborhoods to re, redo their homeowners um, document the way that it should be. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
My name is Lucinda Mauer.
You can pull that down, ma'am.
Pull that down? Oh, okay, thank you. My name is Lucinda Mauer, I live at fifty-eight thirty-three Mill Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, one-six-five-zero-nine. Um, it's nice to see you council members again, I feel like we're old friends after four years. Um, I don't think you're going to hear anything different here tonight than you've heard in the past four years, but I will repeat a few things. Um, we have been lobbying for short-term rentals in the city of Erie now. This is for the greater good of Erie, not just for one neighborhood. This has never been a personal issue, as some of the residents of Erie have made it, but rather an issue for all of the city of Erie. A Siri, a city that is coming back, moving forward and hopefully growing to the city it once was. Short-term rentals will help this happen for the city. They already have, just think, one short-term rental has welcomed over seven hundred and fifty guests. These guests did not throw parties, they did not disrespect the neighborhood or the home they were staying in. They did not have many part, cars parked in the neighborhood. Um, and they certainly did not change one thing about the neighborhood where they stayed. Rather, they spent more money at local businesses, visited our parks, zoos, wineries, restaurants, and of course, Bruscall. This is what people want to do at short-term rentals. There are families who want to be in a family-friendly neighborhood. In this whole process of lobbying and countless conversations over four years, in our city of a population of approximately ninety-four thousand, the only residents who have obje, objected to this are the ones in Glenwood. It seems that they have only one agenda themselves. They don't seem to care about the city they live in or the progress. They refuse to see how short-term rentals, how enhanced the city's tourism and growth. One resident obje, objected to the, um, special exception term in the ordinance. I would like to ask him why he thinks his neighborhood is so special. Doesn't he realize all of Erie is special? Short-term rentals are progressive and have a positive impact on the city. Short-term rentals are progressive and have a positive impact on the city. They cause no negative effect whatsoever. Our goal here tonight is to help you see that. This isn't for ourselves, but for short-term rental owners who do depend on this for their livelihood and their income. I would like to say, the city of Erie has for, has far greater issues to address than the effect of Airbnb. There are citizens in this city right now who have been without water for over two months because their landlord didn't pay the water bill. This is unacceptable. These are real issues. Short-term rentals that have done nothing but bring prosperity and happiness to our city should not be a conversation. Things like that should be. We have presented city council and the zoning board with documentation on short-term rentals, home sharing, examples of ordinance from other communities, and many positive reviews from guests. Erie residents have spoken in favor of short-term rentals. Former residents have sent letters, joined Zoom meetings, all endorsing the short-term rentals. For more people are in favor of this ordinance than are against it. Clearly, this should not be a difficult decision for city council to make in favor of this proposed ordinance. An ordinance that allows all short-term rentals to operate legally while prospering the city of Erie. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Whipple, and I live at 6072. I'm a little taller than she is. 6072 Hummingbird Court in Erie. My remarks will be brief, excuse me, because we've all heard all the arguments, heard the facts, heard the fear of short-term rentals in neighborhoods, and a lot of misinformation how short-term rentals are detrimental to neighborhoods. I listened several years ago, when this all began, to a retired Erie City Police Officer who resides in the neighborhood in question, state that he sees cars parked in the driveway of 4706 Upland Drive with out-of-state license plates. And in his opinion, that means drugs. I mean, really, stop and think about that. If in fact that's the case, everyone who is a visitor or a tourist would be under suspicion of drugs. I ask, how ridiculous does that sound? Another resident complained about having smoke blowing in their yard from a barbecue grill, only to find out later that the owner of the property was having a family get-together. I have not heard one sound argument as to why short-term rentals should not be allowed in R1 neighborhoods, i.e. Glenwood. Their argument seemed to be, they pay some of the highest taxes in the city. They have paid to have enhanced street signs. They plant flowers at the entrance to Glenwood. And as one resident stated last month, he is privileged to live in Glenwood. I ask you, what does that have to do with writing an ordinance to cover short-term rentals? I am sure we can all agree that we are all privileged to live in this community, be it Glenwood, downtown, the west side, or the east side. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court handed down a decision called the Slice of Life, which has been reviewed and explained numerous times, and it's still being questioned. We all see a brighter future for Erie, and we all want that and more. We want to attract tourists, visitors, businesses that will relocate here and bring families back to their roots. We want to see local businesses survive, restaurants, wineries, bars, entertainment, and of course, Prescott. What I am hearing and have heard over the last several years is yes, we want all of that and more. We just don't want it in our neighborhood. Is that a welcoming gesture? We need to move forward and embrace the future, not take steps back. I ask that you pass this ordinance without prejudice for the betterment of the city of Erie. And my personal thanks to the zoning board, the planning commission, and lastly, but certainly not least, Erie City Council for their due diligence in reviewing all of the information, both factual and misinformation. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Sullivan, and I live at 4625 Upland Drive. At the March 16th, 2021 city council meeting, a hearing took place and the amended draft to revise the current zoning law regarding short-term rentals was read. The draft included eight advised regulations in the special exemption section. The special exemption section includes R1 and R1A zone neighborhoods. Fast forward nine months to November 2021. At the November 3rd city council meeting, the amended zoning law had its first reading. By that time, only six regulations remained in the special exemption section. The first regulation that was scrapped states that operators of short-term rentals shall not rent a unit more than 180 cumulative days out of the year. Eliminating this regulation removes all limitations on a homeowner to rent their home 365 days a year. Los Angeles, Washington DC, San Francisco, to name a few, all have limitations on how many days per year a host can rent. The second regulation that was deleted from the original draft states that short-term rentals must be owner occupied. The term owner occupied was so important in the first draft, its definition appeared within the amendment. If the owner is not present, doesn't this turn the property into a motel? There's no stipulation on the number of days renting can take place. How is this different from a hotel or motel? In reviewing other cities that have passed zoning laws around short-term rentals, New York, Los Angeles, Washington DC, Boston, and San Francisco, the home of Airbnb, all contain the rule that short-term rentals must be owner occupied or the property must be the primary residence of the host. Erie is certainly not as big as these cities. But does Erie City Council and the zoning board have such low standards for the city that they would remove these two critical regulations? As a note, these changes were not posted in the meeting minutes for November 3rd, nor were they posted or advertised in the traditional venues such as city council's own website. This includes hearings and council meetings that had taken place to discuss those changes in between March and November. It leads me to believe that these changes were intentionally hidden from public review. Essentially, council was trying to pass a zoning amendment with no restrictions. Also, the planning commission recommended to council the 180 maximum days of renting as well as the owner occupied provision. I would like to strongly suggest that these two regulations be re-added to the amendment along with a ruling to define the minimum distance between short-term rentals, putting a cap on the number permitted within a neighborhood as well as capping on the number of permits per owner. I want to clarify that I remain strongly against short-term rentals in R1 and R1A zone neighborhoods. There is a place where they fit in Erie, and it's your efforts should be to find the most compatible area. Thank you.
Good evening. I will not do as well as my wife, trust me. Michael Sullivan, same address, 4625 Upland Drive. I just have to like compliment.
Excuse me. Just, I know you meant well, please never, anyone here, never step up on the podium.
Okay.
It was just a, I understand, I'm not attacking you. For safety, it's just a rule that we have, please, that's a barrier, okay?
Again, Michael Sullivan, 4625 Upland Drive. I'd like to do a couple of things here. The Morises come well-prepared. I understand, we understand your arguments. But what we're saying is, we're talking about R1 neighborhoods. Basically, Frontier Neighborhood and the Glenwood Neighborhoods. We think it's very, very important that you put the 180 days owner occupied back in there. But let me read this here from 1936, if I will. This is off our website. Everybody has copy now? Mayor, did you get it popping? Says here, "We are associated to protect our investment here in Glenwood." "We are associated to ensure that this is a good neighborhood, suitable place to bring up to our children. We are associated for the purpose of being good neighbors, one to the other, and to make Glenwood a happy and desirable place in which we can live and have Airbnb." This is from Spike Spencer, who was a businessman years ago in Erie, who was quite an individual. That was from 1936 to 1938 when he was president of Glenwood. And I think it still stands, still stands today. I'm going to bounce around a little. I'd like to, I would assume all council members have looked at this refocus report that was done in 2017, 2016. I had some emails with Charles Buki this weekend. He would not go on the spot and say good or bad about Airbnb's and neighborhoods. But I think it's worth looking at this again. I would assume city council, the mayor, everybody has read this, reviewed it, and I would hope has bought into it. In their report, 2016, they mentioned there were 16 neighborhoods. Only two of the neighborhoods were healthy. Except two out of 16. One was Frontier, one was Glenwood. I don't know if it's changed a lot in the last five years. Unfortunately, I probably think it's maybe even deteriorated somewhat. One of the things they have here is cost-effective intervening in the Glenwood planning area. Things they can do, okay? Stop early signs of distress in the Glenwood neighborhood through a strong code enforcement and incentives to support home improvement. Says right here. So do we think what we're talking about tonight, if you would approve that ordinance? Does this? I don't know. I don't. Depends if you believe in the report. When I bought the home on 4625 Upland Drive 20 years ago, I had certain expectations. I don't think I'm any special person. I worked all my life. The company I worked for for 37 years went out of business. Went back to another printing company, then I was director at the lighthouse for five years. I've worked my entire life. My wife and I are not special people. We're not wealthy people. We work, we keep our house meticulously, and we take pride in that. But when I bought the house, I had certain expectations. One was from Glenwood. They arrived with a package with a brochure and the history of the neighborhood. Talked all about that the Irish couldn't be, the Italians and the Jewish people, et cetera, et cetera. But we know those days are gone. The neighborhood is extremely integrated now. But it also said in the declarations there, you cannot run a business out of your house, right there. Mrs. Morris brings up the idea about the HOAs, which we've looked at. And what I'm saying is, right, number one is, you cannot run a business out of your home in Glenwood. They've done it from day one. When I bought the home in Glenwood, I made the assumptions too that the city, I had certain expectations from the city. I assumed 20 years ago that the city wouldn't allow a country fair down the street for me, an office building down the street, a gas station. And I certainly didn't think there would be a motel on my street. These were expectations I had when I bought that house in good faith. But what am I to think now? When they say that's overwhelming favorable, I don't know where we've got that. Last meeting I was here, I brought the stacks in. Out of the 292 homes in Glenwood, I can speak of 84% are against short-term rentals in R1 neighborhoods. I have the documentation. I offered it to you, Mayor, if you'd like it. Anybody can see it. Where do we get the idea that everybody is in favor of it? As I've stated, Karen and I've stayed in R1s, or excuse me, in Airbnb's around the country. There's a place for them. We don't think there's a place in R1 neighborhoods. Again, this report, why would you jeopardize the health of the two neighborhoods? I think this pool is about $130,000 that they said are healthy. So I worry about those expectations. I've been asked, maybe this has been discussed, but it's something to think about. If there's a motel in the neighborhood, Airbnb's just fancy, it's a motel. What do we do about our taxes? I agree. We pay the highest taxes in the city along with Frontier. Are you going to reduce our property taxes, Mr. Mayor, council? I would think you should. Again, I had certain expectations when I bought that home. I've worked all my life extremely hard to live in that house. Nothing was ever given to me. So what would the city do? My school taxes are almost $3,000 a year. My property taxes are through the roof, and I have a county tax bill. But now I have people coming and going. And we can all make it nice that they're all good people and all that. But trust me, we've had problems, and you know that. One of the things that might be addressed is, again, you're probably aware of it, Glenwood, where we are, is mostly alleys. The Morises have a driveway. We don't have a driveway. They're all alleys. Where is the parking? Last fall, or whenever it was, there was a bass boat and, you know, all the accessories over at the Morris property. Where's that going to go? In the alley? Is it going to go in somebody's garage? These are the questions we have, that if you're going to go down this road, this has to be tightened up and spelled out. That, that makes, you know, that scares me. It makes no sense at all. So we've come back to that. You know, I wish you'd look at the, at the report again. I wish you would, you would think that, again, 84% of the residents are against the Airbnb's. I made a note here about the, about the certain expectation. Be like if you went up to Roth Catalog and bought a Caddy, and when you went to pick it up, they gave you a Ford Pinto. That's not what I expected. And that's not what I expect for my neighborhood, and that's certainly not what I hope to expect from city council or for the mayor. R1 neighborhoods are important. It says it here. There's two healthy ones in the city. I agree with everything going on downtown in the city. I'm a huge backer of all that, okay? But Karen and I aren't going anywhere. We don't live in Florida. We get out of town, it's for two weeks in the winter. That's our neighborhood. That's our livelihood up there. And we take a responsibility to keep the neighborhood safe, yes, and to know our neighbors. So I say to you, I disagree with the numbers I've heard about what it could bring to the, to the revenue side. In finishing up, I said Airbnb's in R1 neighborhoods will not balance the budget and will not act significantly to the revenue stream. But strong R1 neighborhoods like this will stop light and add revenue and help support the growth and have a healthy, vibrant center city. I truly believe that. I think if you are going to go down this road, you have to put that 180-day clause back in there. It's absolutely mandatory. And do it for R1 neighborhoods. Again, we're not special people, but these are our, there's a couple neighborhoods left in the city. So I ask you to think about those thoughts. Attorney Betsa, Tom Siebel asked me to read. You've got all his comments and remarks. Are they on the record?
It's not testimony, but it'll be entered into the record, yes.
Should I read it? It'll take me two minutes.
It's not your statement, no.
Don't read it? Okay, but it will be entered into the record?
Council will review it, council has it.
Okay, all right. Any questions for me? I guess we're allowed to have some. Okay, all right. Any questions for me? I guess we're allowed to have some questions back and forth. Mr. President, Lou, any questions?
No, Michael, we've been kicking it down the road.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done. Appreciate the time and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kibbe, 2902 Alpine Drive, Erie. I'm actually here on behalf of the Greater Erie Board of Realtors. I am on the board of directors and was the 20, 20 past president. I'm here to speak strongly in favor of the removal of the owner-occupied and 180-day provisions. As you know, there are a lot of investors who've already bought Airbnbs. They rely on these heavily for their livelihood. It's, it is really, you know, the anecdotal evidence, and I think the factual evidence says that it's really assisted in helping to grow our tourism business. In addition to other things, I can speak from personal experience. My 26-year-old son, when he goes traveling, he's, he goes Airbnbs. And I think that's the trend, and I don't think, and some of the folks that called in earlier from other states, when they come back to this area with their larger families, I mean, certainly the utilization of Airbnbs makes a lot of sense. The, the other point is, if you think practically, if, if I am limited to my personal residence, my primary residence, and that's from which I can utilize Airbnb, you know, most people who live here most of the year, that, that just isn't practical if that's the only house they can use as an Airbnb. Not everybody goes away for six months. I think that's probably more of a minority of folks who do that. We're certainly, you know, it just, it just is an economic driver that I think we don't want to put the skids on. It just would be a huge chilling effect if we, if we put this provision in there. We absolutely support regulation, you know, noise ordinances, all those things, things that long-term rentals are subjected to, things that regular, everyday residents of the city are subjected to. Absolutely, they should be enforced. But let's not, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think we've got a great thing going here. We want to continue that. We support that. And again, I think somebody raised it. If, if there is a neighborhood that has strong reservations collectively, if it is 84% of a neighborhood that is opposed to Airbnbs, they have a homeowners association, they can enact those restrictions. They have every right to do that. And if they have a majority of the folks that agree with that, they can move forward. But as a general policy to put those restrictions on, I think that would put Erie behind the times. So thank you very much.
Hello. Georgiana Ely, 4524 Cherry Street, Glenwood Association. I think it's ironic that the Morises and her sisters, Mrs. Morris, do not live in the city of Erie. Mrs. Morris' address is Florida. She lives on Merritt Island, Florida. It is 90% white, and they do not allow any owner-occupied, any short-term rentals. Just want to make that clear. I think people are misunderstanding that we are not against Airbnbs. We just are against them in R1 and R1 neighborhoods. And I will, this is sort of an ironic thing I'm going to read, but I want to read it anyway. This is from April 20th, 2019. These, was written, this was written by the two attorneys that won the case in front of the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania regarding Airbnbs. The title of it is, "PA Municipalities Worried About the Airbnb Trend Can Rest Easier." In recent decisions, PA Supreme Court reversed the Commonwealth Court's ruling and doing so state that Airbnb-type rentals are against residential zoning laws. Back in March of 2018, he wrote, "The Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision to review a case involving a now prevalent issue confronted by municipalities across the country, the influx of Airbnbs in residential neighborhoods. On the 26th, 2019, the court issued a decision in the State Slice of Life LLC versus Hamilton zoning hearing board, in the process made for a happy lot of municipalities through the Commonwealth. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court, reversing the Commonwealth Court's ruling, decided that short-term transient rentals such as those typically found on websites, Airbnb, et cetera, were not permitted to use in residential zoning districts at issue in the case. The court stated, "The purely transient use of a house is not a permitted use in a residential zoning district, limited use to single-family homes by a single housekeeping unit." To make this ruling, the court discussed how most zoning ordinances define the term "family," acknowledging that many have adopted the phrase "single housekeeping unit," which has become a widely accepted term of art that the courts have defined as requiring the occupants of a home to live and behave like a family and a character that is permanent and not transitory. The court examined the goals of zoning in general, and more specifically in creating residential zoning districts, explaining that the underlying purpose of creating neighborhoods and a stable community environment support the conclusions that the transient nature of short-term rentals confound this goal, and there cannot be a permanent use in such residential zoning districts. So this went through the courts. It was found in our favor, discussing the derecho, and again, they're saying the decision is a significant win for municipalities across the Commonwealth, seeking to preserve those underlying characteristics of its residential districts, as discussed by the Supreme Court, without having to modify their existing zoning ordinances. At the same time, it effectively shuts down the Airbnb market in single-family residential zoning districts in Pennsylvania, rendering a major blow to property owners and online services that depend on those. What remains to be seen going forward is how this will be interpreted, such as sober living houses that have characteristics of both family and transit uses. The ramifications we've surely heard for a long time. Again, under another document I found, Useful Community Development, or it's UsefulCommunityDevelopment.org. These are the things about zoning ordinances. It seems like if this is passed, as mentioned previously, how is all this going to be enforced? Noise and nuisance provisions, requirements about garbage collection, minimal required spacing, reinforcing the idea that normal occupancy limits, proof of code compliance, limitations on turnover, et cetera, et cetera. It does not seem that the council is dealing with these when they're going to, they're proposing to allow Airbnbs in residential neighborhoods. As previously mentioned by Karen, city after city, once I, I did write research on this, I keep getting hit after hit of cities and municipalities who are restricting Airbnbs. Jersey City, Boss, and Washington DC, Santa Monica, Padre Island, Texas, Askin City, Harbinale, Berlin, Amsterdam, we talked about that last time, Santa Monica, London, Las Vegas, New Orleans, Honolulu, San Francisco, New York, New York, and Calabasas, California. All these places are realizing the, the problems that you have when you allow short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. And I think that the city would, hopefully would be considering and thinking about these limitations also. Thank you.
My name is Theodore Ely. Taller than her. And I live at 4524 Cherry Street. And I'm, of course, her husband. First of all, I'd like to say, I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. I know there was a remark last time we were here, that this has been on the docket for, for a long time. And somebody mentioned two years, but at least nine months of that has been, as far as I know, the council's delay in getting this thing to the hearing. And I ask you to think about how you're going to vote in this. Not as just getting it off the docket or ending it at this year, but as whether or not this is a good law or a bad law. And I submit to you that the law, that the ordinance that's being proposed is a bad law. I'm not happy to say that, but that's the truth. Why is it a bad law? Well, one, it takes out the provision for absentee landlords. I talked about last time that it is in your code, that you do not like properties that have absentee landlords for various reasons, which I won't go into. Again, I think you probably remember it. The owner restricted, to have an owner on the residence, it's a very important factor. 127 people were killed last year in Airbnbs. There's one thing that those Airbnbs had in common above all others, and that was they were not owner-occupied. They were absentee landlords. And that's how these problems exist. And it's not unusual. This happened here once before. The house across the street from the Morises was, in fact, a party house. They had a party there. It was horrible. Property was damaged. People were drunk, wandering around, urinating on the street. And also, you know, we've had problems with traffic, the Morises included, and parties at both the Morris's house and the other Airbnb, where they had a hockey team reunion and had a great deal of drinking and fighting going on. There's no limits on the amount of transients that can come through this neighborhood. It's supposed to have been 150. That's what the, that's what the commission that you asked to review this said that they wanted to have limits on the amount of days that, that properties could be rented. I don't know why you'd want to throw that out. It's sort of like taking the brakes off this whole thing. Also, as has been pointed out, there's nothing to stop motels or hotels under the definitions that are in this ordinance. There's nothing that says it has to be a principal residence of the party. Excuse me, the owner. It also does not provide any problem, any penalty for a problem where the, there is a noise or other type of violation with the property. It only says that the owner would be responsible for a recurrence of such conduct. Well, why shouldn't he be responsible for the conduct when it happens? I know I am. If I do, if I have something illegal happen in my house, I don't say, "Well, just give me a bye on that. Next time, you can charge me." There's no definition of what a screen planting strip is. How high, how wide, where it's put, or anything like that. It's not, it's very unclear as to what the definition of that is. Also, off-street parking, as you've noted. Now, Morris has advertised, for instance, that they can accommodate 18 people in their residence. Where are these people going to park? This is a city. Not, this is not like they have some sort of parking lot someplace where they could put cars for enough for 18 people. So what are they going to do? There's no limits on how many short-term rentals can be in a specific area. So there could be dozens, for all I know. And that, of course, will drive down the property, the value of our property. Now, there was a Realtor up here who said that people invested money in property. Well, the Slice of Life case was about, I think it was 2018. These people have plenty of time to get out of the business, to sell their properties. Property values were up this summer for some reason, I don't know. I don't feel sorry for these investors who hung on to their property even after the Slice of Life case came down and warned them that they're not allowed to have Airbnbs or SDRs in, in R1 neighborhoods. I would also just point out one thing about zoning. I'm sure you all know this, but I'm going to say it anyways. But zoning, the idea of zoning is that you have specific uses for specific areas. You don't have people having uses all over the place. That's the way it used to be before zoning took place. You could have a bar next door to a church or whatever. Zoning was, the idea of zoning was to compartmentalize uses into areas that were appropriate for that use. And for this one, for instance, it, it would be that, you know, we're talking about the tourist trade. So why not have these Airbnbs confined to where the tourists are? Makes sense, doesn't it? But other heads and I may disagree. Studies have shown that SDRs will eliminate long-term rentals in areas because they are more profitable. And I would submit to you that it's not just us that are going to be hurt by Airbnbs all over the city. It's going to be a lot of people who can't afford a house and can't afford to move someplace else because some, their landlord wants to have a more profitable, some, some entrepreneur comes in, wants to have a, makes the house into an Airbnb because he's going to make four times the money, which is what this is all about, actually. It's a commercial business. All these people just want to make money. That's Mrs. Morris, her gang, and the other guy spoke. Well, as, as my wife suggested, this is, this, SDRs are being, we're not, this isn't progressive. This is regressive. Because already, Airbnbs have been a lot for a long time. And it used to be like when the, you know, when, when your son moved out or something like that, you'd rent out his room. That was the start of Airbnb. Now it's become a big business. And you have these large corporations coming into areas, buying up property, and turning them into SDRs. Well, you know, I hate to tell you this, but all these municipalities, the overwhelming amount of municipalities are confining, Airbnbs are eliminating altogether. The other thing is, it's noted that, well, all these things, like Mrs. Morris said, we're just speculating. Maybe it's going to happen, maybe it's not going to happen. But she's pretty sure it isn't. There's not going to be any problems. Well, we already had problems, you know? We've had two of the Airbnbs who have had parties, who have been disruptive, who have violated various restrictions on parking and everything else in the city. It's already there. Yeah. It's only going to get worse. Especially when you get people who just don't give a damn. They just want to make money. There's going to be, if Airbnbs are set out, there's going to be a general decline in our neighborhood of residential units. People are going to move out. They're going to be pushed out. They're going to be, they're going to get out because they don't want problems with living in an Airbnb neighborhood. Glenwood has always been, and other Frontier too, have always been neighborhoods that take pride in what the housing HOA accomplishes. So I submit to you, the question before you is whether you should vote for an ordinance that goes against the will of the people, your own commission's findings, recommendations from, from the zoning board, and your own findings of fact in your zoning code as to absentee landlords. I would suggest that you either table this issue until these defects can be addressed. I would suggest to you either table this issue until these defects can be addressed. And I know it's prolonging this whole thing. Or you just drop this law altogether and we go back to the previous law which Slice of Life, as my wife testified, would prevail. And that would solve the problem anyways. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Gleckler. I live at 420 Shawnee Drive, and that is in the Frontier Park area. I also have served as a past president of the Frontier Improvement Association. And I'm here on myself and also for the association. It's our opinion that the ordinance as written is fundamentally flawed. The owner occupied text is poorly defined and is subject to interpretation. Primary residence, which is used in the language, is not defined in the zoning regulations and has no occupancy requirements. Short-term rentals also are defined, lack definition, and are overly broad. While owner occupied is inferred, the clause also permit owned and managed firms by corporations. Do we really want to have the Frontier Association, other areas of the city, having homes run by corporations? Or do we really want to have it done by private citizens managing their properties? What's your intent? Right now, the language seems to infer that owned and managed firms by corporations is permitted and perfectly acceptable for profit, I presume. The term short-term rental is defined as thirty consecutive days. But there's no limit to the number of these thirty consecutive days. For example, could you have a thirty-day rental period? Wait a day? Then have another thirty-day rental period? Wait a day? Have another thirty-day rental period? The language is not clear, but it certainly is subject to interpretation if that's possible. It's our opinion that there is a time and a place for short-term rentals. And we think that having it in R1-type neighborhoods is inappropriate. We also believe that there is time to learn. And we suggest that council consider a more measured approach. Perhaps considering starting out in particular zoning areas. Seeing how that goes. And then perhaps expanding it beyond that. Take a measured pace. There is no need to rush this. There's no need to do it all at one time. You can do it in a measured approach. It's our opinion that the text as written is fundamentally flawed, needs to be corrected. And we ask the council table the measure at this point in time, reconsider their position, and again, please take a measured approach. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Claudine Beam. Address 1624 West 22nd Street, Erie 16502. I just want to come and support the ordinance as it's written with the provision that the owner occupied and 180-day stipulation be removed from the ordinance. I just, everything that's been said here has been said for months. So, just as another spin on it. Yes, I am interested in investing in properties just like any person that would go and look to buy a property to rent to long-term tenants. That has landlord and leases and all of that that is regulated already. They have to register with the city. They have the inspections. And all of that is already in place from an enforcement standpoint. And I think that should be part of what has to happen here. But I just wanted to see if maybe there's a parallel between those two types of investors. And basically, I went and researched being what would be considered a regular, long-term landlord. And why that didn't fit my personality is because I want to be more involved. And I want to be in the property between every guest. And I want to make sure that that property is maintained at a level that would be much higher than would be necessarily just to have it rented normally through a long-term lease. It is furnished to the hill, the expectation of those guests. Make sure that the property values are at a very high level. But what I'm saying is just that I, as an investor, I'm trying to choose that option that works best for me. And to be limited to, no, you can have, they can rent their house, you know, to whatever. You can have rentals. It's not, you know, whether it's thirty days or two years, you can follow the same regulations. So, I would just try to make that comparison from an investment standpoint of limiting versus, you know, a regular rental landlord investor. And I don't know, I can't speak to the number of, you know, corporations doing this. I don't know of any here locally. I mean, I'm definitely interested in investing in the place I grew up through this, through this method. And I want to make money doing it. And in a way that is responsible for the city that I enjoy. So, I thank you for your time and your efforts. I think that the enforcements that were rewritten in about making the registration and following those steps that are already in place for regular rentals is, you know, a good step in the right direction as far as being able to enforce this at a level that makes sense for the city. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Robuleski. 5009 Gordon Lane, Erie, Pennsylvania. A couple of issues, first of all, with the ordinance. I took one course in law in college. And I'll tell you, this ordinance is non-enforceable. It's as simple as that. If somebody violates the ordinance, what are the penalties? None whatsoever. Now, why would you gentlemen and ladies sign an ordinance that has no penalties for violating the ordinance? It does not make any sense whatsoever. None whatsoever in terms of the housing inspections, okay? The code enforcement, the health department. We'll go down the list. The ordinance is non-enforceable. You're opening up a can of worms for yourself by passing this. You need to sit down and take a look specifically of how you're going to enforce the law. Without that, this is absolutely meaningless. My second observation is that it's been said today that short-term rentals are good for the city of Erie. It's a revenue generator. And yes, people come in, they spend money, they spend money at bars, restaurants, entertainment, and everything else. But what is specifically the income to the city of Erie from these rentals? I would like to ask this gentleman here, you have rentals. What portion of your rental income goes to the general fund of the city of Erie? Other than the property taxes? And where does that, where does that go to, where does that money go to? Where does that seven percent go to? How about Ms. Moore? What percentage of your income goes to the city of Erie? Your rental income, other than the property taxes? So, who gets that seven percent? Do you know who gets it? President, do you know who gets it?
No, sir, I don't.
Jim, you know who gets it? Mel, do you know who gets that seven percent?
General fund, probably.
Well, we don't know that, okay? We don't know that.
It's a county-level tax.
It's a county-level tax, is that correct? So, the city and county splits a seven percent? Well, we have to look into that in terms of revenue. I'm quite sure, okay, that the seven percent is not going to cover any of the costs or added any more revenue to the city of Erie. Now, for example, what was your annual income last year for rental?
Sir, sir.
And what does that seven percent represent?
Hold on, hold on, sir.
That's a legitimate question.
I understand. We need testimony from you. And so, we can't have back and forth.
Now, that's a good question, okay? Let's show their income statements for rental properties, okay? And what percentage goes to the city? Okay?
Sir, sir.
Because no one knows the answer to that question. And you cannot pass this ordinance without knowing where the revenue is coming from. Everything else is all bogus in terms of this planning. So, the best course of action is put this on hold, okay? Until you find out that those questions are answered in terms of who pays it, who gets the money from it, okay? I contend that the city is being short-changed by this particular ordinance and will continue to cause problems, not only not causing more revenue, but causing problems in terms of the implementation of it. Does anybody have any questions on my position? This gentleman is welcome to step back up here and testify in terms of his income. Is that a gentleman?
If he wishes to do so.
If he wishes, come up and tell us how much you make and what you pay. And we'll see where Ms. Moore, if you were to tell us how much you make.
Hold on, now. What we want to be doing is we want to be offering testimony that helps council. So, let me just explain. If council makes a billion dollars or makes zero, that doesn't necessarily answer whether or not the ordinance should or should not be passed. You're raising a question saying that there's not enough money coming to the city to make it a good idea for you. That point's well taken. If council has additional questions about how it's going to get money or how that will generate revenue, it could table this, it could vote against it. But I think having a debate between residents and what this gentleman's experience is does not make it whether it's a good idea for council to pass the ordinance or not. You've asked it, and they have to answer it in their mind. And if they feel comfortable with it, they could vote yes, vote no, or amend it.
Okay. To council and understand the gentleman's position here, what you have to do. In your mind, you have to say to yourself, am I doing the right thing for the city of Erie to generate revenues for the general fund? And from what I can take it, the answer is no.
That's a hard act to follow. That guy's super smart, and he's my next-door neighbor, and I love him. My name is John Wayley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane in the city of Erie. Couple of things to start off with. If Erie is so great and Upland Drive is so fantastic, why doesn't Mrs. Morris live there year-round? I think she owes it to herself to live in this great town. I think it's naive to think that Airbnb is going to grow this city. If anything, I think it's a zero-sum game. If fifty people stayed at Airbnb, that's fifty less people that stayed at Nick Scott's hotel. I'd love to see some real evidence that shows that more people visited the city of Erie last year because we have 136 Airbnb's, just like every other city in the country has Airbnb's. And of the money, it absolutely is a county tax. The city sees nothing. They collect, they give it to visit Erie, and it helps us pay for two hotels in a convention center that nobody uses. So, nothing comes to the city. If you want to add five percent tax, I'd love it. Let's do something like that. So, somebody touched on what is a planting strip? I think it's a piece of junk legislation. It's not well thought out. Somehow, after two or three years, we're still racing and leaving real open-ended questions. So, what is a planting strip? How wide is it? How long is it? How tall is it? What is it comprised of? Can it be a fence? Does it have to be arbor vida? Can it be pine? What is it? Now, here's the Airbnb on my street on Gordon Lane, and I'll give these to you. Where does he put the planting strip? Because it cannot be on the property line. It's got to be three feet, one way or the other. Where's it at? There's no room here. Here's Upland Drive. Where's her planting strip going to go? How big is it? Does it extend all the way out? Or is it just where the house is? That's just one part of this. What does adequate parking mean? Here's Gordon Lane. When the Airbnb is nice and full, there's four cars on the street. It's not a very wide street. That's not adequate parking. In the city ordinance, right now, it says off-street parking is defined as a seventeen-foot-long, nine-foot-wide strip. So, is the guy on Gordon Lane going to have eight seventeen-foot-long? He's going to have to remove all the grass in his house and put a giant parking lot up there. Then his stormwater fee is going to go up because he's going to have less impermeable surfaces. So, maybe it's a win-win for everybody. I don't think you've thought this through, and I think we're just racing for it. So, if you pass this tonight, as soon as the gavel goes down, 537 Gordon Lane and 4706 Upland are illegal to operate as an Airbnb. They have not been inspected, they do not have a license, and they have not gone to the zoning board to have a special exemption meeting. Illegal tonight. What are you going to do about it? How are you going to stop them from operating? There's no penalty. The penalty is you're going to take away their short-term rental license. They don't have a short-term rental license because they haven't went to get it. So, they're both going to continue to operate with immunity. They're going to, you know, fill our streets. So, it's really junk legislation. The other thing that really gets me is slippery slope theory with my kids, my jobs, and what you guys are doing. I was at a city council meeting sometime in the last 20 years, and the zoning height down on the bayfront was set at 55 feet. Nothing is going to go above 55 feet because the people deserve to see the water. It's a beautiful bayfront. The library is 55 feet tall. The courtyard by Marriott is more than 55 feet. The Sheraton's more than 55 feet. The parking garage is more than 55 feet. The Blasco library is more than 55 feet. Scott's Motel, do you get my point? So, you can pass a law, and then you ignore it. Or the administration ignores it. So, you're saying today, I think we're going to let Airbnb's operate in R1s. Well, I'm concerned that the next thing is two-family homes, flats. Can you build a flat in Glenwood? You cannot. But maybe you'll let them do that. Can I have a three-family home? Nope. Can't have an apartment, can't have a motel. I can't have adult daycare in Glenwood or Frontier. That's a rule. That's a zoning law. You going to change that? It really bothers me as we start to chip away and erode our laws. Now, right now in the city of Erie, you can have a bed and breakfast in numerous zoning things. And I said this before, Airbnb used to be called airbedandbreakfast.com. Then they changed the name. So, bed and breakfast in the zoning law 305.22, they're intended to provide overnight or short-term accommodations for transient guests in a home-like atmosphere. And they must meet four criteria. So, we already have Airbnb's set up in certain districts of the city. I'm fine with that. I think it goes against the Erie refocus plan. I don't see why we want to take low-density residential, family-oriented homes and turn them into a motel. The people that bought the lovely house next door on Gordon Lane have two kids. One's in high school, one's in junior high. They didn't buy that house knowing that a motel was going to be next to them. They had no idea. I talk to them all the time. Cars in and out, people in and out. So, you've already got rules where you can have an Airbnb. You want to change the word to be short-term rental, that's fine. Keep them where they're at, keep them where you already have them. No reason to have them anywhere else. And if I can not come up there, maybe come up.
Thank you, John.
May I just speak to the one thing that he had asked about the, okay? So, yeah, Benjamin Henry. I visited the, I don't know the exact name. It's like the tourism board or, you know, committee or something. And I believe that it might be four percent of the tax that's collected is given to this tourism, you know, oversight committee, committee. And the other three percent is given to the city. Or it might be flip-flop. Maybe it's, you know, the other way around. This is, this is the information that was given to me by the guy who runs the organization directly. I was in the room with him. The other thing that's really frustrating is we took an oath, and I could count at least five or 10 times where things were said that are just not true and slanderous. That's concerning, and I think...
Sir, sir, we're not having another go-around. We're not having a round two. You were asked a specific question, you came up to answer it, you've addressed it. Thank you. Does that conclude witnesses to offer testimony? So, with that, we will close the public hearing. And thank you, everyone, for keeping it as much as you could to the point. Thank you, everyone, for keeping it as much as you could to the point.
Ordinances for final passage. Lori, wasn't there the one woman who was on who wanted to talk about something else on the agenda? Remember she, she went from, I don't know if she's still on there. She went from.
I don't have a way to bring her in.
It was Sheila. Remember? She spoke. She spoke. She is done. She didn't want to talk about.
She just opposed the money going to the Eagle test.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we can go back.
I think we have more citizens to be heard.
Yeah, public comments. Thanks, Cecilia. Are there any more public comments, the citizens to be heard portion of the meeting?
Not.
Any more citizens to be heard, public comments?
We're done.
We'll go into ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16250, official file ordinance number 552021, an ordinance amending Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the city zoning ordinance to incorporate language for short-term rentals.
So before, so let me just explain what we're voting on so we have no misunderstanding. The ordinance that you're voting on now is the ordinance that does not have 180-day or owner occupancy restriction. If you are opposed to Airbnb, to short-term rentals, then you would be voting no on this motion. If you wish to have 180-day requirement or the owner-occupied requirement in the residential districts, you would be voting no on this proposal. If you wish to allow short-term rentals throughout the city, wherever there's residences, including residential districts, and not have the 180-day requirement or the owner-occupied requirement, you would be voting yes on this proposal. One more. Those were the three main, but there was also some people that came and we've heard have asked for other restrictions or other conditions. If you wish to have other conditions, you would be voting no on this, this ordinance.
Mr. Betts, isn't there a timeframe in which we allowed the short-term rental people to apply for the license? Didn't we talk about that? Or did we put that in the ordinance? Or is that just?
The, the, the council had indicated that the effective day of the ordinance would be 60 days after passage, which would then, the theory being it would then allow people to go get their permits.
Thank you.
If it were to pass, every property that has a short-term rental and everyone wishing to have a short-term rental would need to get a license.
When I initially tabled this, I did it because there was no real policy there as far as, what's the word I'm looking for? The cost to apply for it, what the license was all about, what the fee was, if the license was broken. All these things were up in the air, and I was told at that time, pass it and we'll do that after we have it. Remember that, Renee? You told me that? You forgot that too? Okay. But anyway, that's what was told to us. And it came back to us a couple of times, and there's a lot in there, changing to 180 and all this kind of thing. But we still have not really defined how we are going to, to run them, basically. The word we got was they're going to be just like regular rentals. Well, they're not regular rentals. And there's not that many of them in the areas that you're talking about, the residential. But we still don't have a real policy as to how we are going to attack those things. My point, I, at 7%, did we ever find out? How much of that 7% did we get? None of it? We get nothing. Okay, so it's going to be a cost.
Paul, share with Paul.
Paul?
Come on, Paul.
Wake up, Paul. No, the, you know, the whole point is we're going to have to have an inspector go out there and do this stuff. It's going to be an expense to the city, so there shouldn't be an outline as to how we're going to get that money back. I don't have a problem hiring an inspector to go out and do that if he actually cultivates money by going out and doing his job. But to just say we're going to cover it and run with it, I had a problem with it initially and I still do. Chad, you good?
I don't know if Jake Welsh is still, he was, he was zooming in. The, the way that the inspections would, would be administered is the same way they're administered now through, for all rentals. These are treated as rental properties, and so they would have to, in order to get inspected and licensed, they would have to come in. Many of them are, are already licensed and, and as a registered rental and get inspected. So that process, the fee associated with that is already in place.
Is there any additional fee for the short term?
There is not. They would be inspected in the same manner that any other long-term rental would be inspected. So there's not an additional fee. The, the difference, though, in the R1 and the R1A is that these would also now be treated as special exception. So they would have to come in and go through that process, go before the zoning hearing board and apply. And I'm sorry, I don't have that fee off the top of my head, but there's already fees established and a process for review for special exceptions. So those are already established.
I just say I've never seen that. That's like, was my question. But if you say they're there, I'm not going to argue.
Yeah, we would treat them like any other special exception within the zoning ordinance.
Mr. President, I think we have been told that several times, including in caucus, that this is what was going to happen. But can I ask the solicitor a question? Because we had, we have obviously two homeowners' associations speaking out against this, and we have owners of short-term rentals saying homeowners' associations can regulate. And Mr. Betts, I think you told us that, I don't know if at a public meeting, but I know you've talked to us about that previously. So is it accurate that if the Frontier Association, I'm sorry, Frontier Improvement Association and the Glenwood Association want to keep out short-term rentals, that their homeowners' association is free to do that? I mean, I don't know you, you want to speak for the association, but I think that.
You could.
You said that.
A group of people, a homeowners' association can make their own set of rules, and they could allow or disallow things. The specific rules that each of those two groups have made, I'm not personally familiar with. So the process of how to amend those rules or change them, I can't say how easy or how hard that would be. But the general concept of can a homeowners' association regulate what is permitted and not permitted? Yes, and it happens all the time. But I would just say that when a homeowners' association objects or supports an ordinance or a proposal, that shouldn't be discounted because they can make their own rules. I mean, I think they're saying they think it's, it's bad to pass this ordinance for R1 or R1A properties in general. So I think you take that for, for what it's worth. But yes, they, in theory, could regulate their own group of people that are members of that organization.
What do they do, solicitor? They call the police if they find somebody that's doing it wrong?
I was talking about them.
Police do not enforce a homeowners' association rule. The homeowners' association rule would typically, again, you put me at a somewhat of a disadvantage because I'm not, I'm not intimately familiar with, with any specific rules, but typically the way that's done is that if it violates the terms of the homeowners' association, it's tied into their property, it would be enforced through the court system. But the police would not. You would go to court to enforce it. So I, an example would be certain types of fencing that may be objectionable in a homeowners' association. An above-ground swimming pool are oftentimes regulated by homeowners' association. So if I put a giant fence up that's not permitted, and I start putting my above-ground pool, typically the way you would enforce that is that the homeowners' association would take me to court to prohibit me from putting that up.
And that has nothing to do with us. I mean, we aren't going to tell the homeowners' association what to do. I had one other comment.
Mr. Brennan wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just finish this one? Because, okay. Bill Gluckler said that, he said, do we really want in the Frontier Association to have homes run by corporations? And I do believe that in the Frontier Association, there are homes run by nonprofits. If you'll recall, the big fight that Frontier had in having group homes allowed into the Frontier Association, so now those nonprofits, I guess, aren't like bad guys trying to make money. But I do think that there are group homes in the Frontier Association. I think that there's one, at least there, there used to be one on Monica Drive. And I just, I have one other comment, then I'll. Mr. Wayley is probably going to regret giving me this book, Startup City. I told him I did not get to chapter seven yet, but actually I had started here. So one of the things that this author talks about is, you know, the, the advantage of disruptive economies. It's no accident that the biggest disruptions to date have been in overregulated markets historically stymied by politically powerful but less consumer-oriented industries. Uber and Airbnb, as well as their new economy competitors, have been buoyed by prevailing cultural trends and the younger generations who balk at a dearth of options in a world increasingly driven by variety and choice. Obviously, this was written pre-pandemic, but the guy that wrote the book that Mr. Wayley gave me to try and encourage the city of Erie officials to be innovative and entrepreneurial and not to do things the same old way is advocating for short-term rentals. So anyhow, just be careful of the books that you pass up, John. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.
Uh, just a question for clarification. The, the rules of the associations overrides the ordinance of the city?
To the extent that they're more restrictive, yes, they have the right to enforce their own rules. And so if we say that grass cannot exceed eight inches in height, the homeowners' association can take that farther and say, no, it can only, can't exceed five inches in height. They can be more restrictive. They cannot gut or lessen the restrictions imposed by the city or the state or the federal government.
Thank you, sir.
But they must be consistent, right? You're just almost asking for vigilante type stuff with the road we're going down right now. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. Betts, real quick, if I could. So if this, if this gets voted down no, what happens tomorrow? It's illegal to have Airbnbs in R1 and R1A anywhere?
That's a, that's a tough question, but I'll take my best shot at it. If we, again, let me go back to my first comment, that if you oppose Airbnbs or short-term rentals as a whole, vote no on the ordinance. If you oppose them in residential districts, vote no on the ordinance. But if you, if you like the ordinance as it's drafted, you would vote yes. The, what would happen if, if it were to be voted down and we have nothing pending? Then I think the answer would be that in a residential district, to the extent that it restricts it to single-family housing, Airbnbs, short-term rentals would not be permitted. To the extent that the ordinance allows for transient residential use, you would have to look at it on a, on a zone-by-zone basis to determine, because now you don't have short-term rentals listed specifically. You would have to look at what's the closest thing. And so what I would say as a general rule, it would be permitted in some districts. It would not typically be permitted at the residential district.
Everybody, Michael, any? No?
Mr. President?
Mr. Brennan?
As I am for Airbnbs, I just, even tonight, so many different questions or scenarios were brought up that it's almost like this ordinance is still too vague. Like it needs to be more specific. And the last thing I want to do is try to pass it on to the next counselor next year or prolong this any longer. But it just seems, there's too many loose ends. Everything is not answered, but I believe Airbnbs are a good thing for the city of Erie. It's just, as it is written, like I mentioned, it just doesn't seem complete, put it that way. Thank you.
Are you moving table?
I have no problem with moving to table.
Do we have a second for the table? We have a second for Mr. Witherspoon?
With a motion to table, it's not debatable, so you're voting.
Correct.
Catch me up. So we're voting to table?
This is a, this is a governmental nightmare going on right now, but what we have now is a motion to table the ordinance. So any ordinance, any amendment of that ordinance, all of that is dead for tonight under the current proposal. You're voting yes if you wish to table it, which effectively will pass it on to next year. You're voting no if you wish to take some form of action on the ordinance tonight.
Voting to table the resolution. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Brzinski? Motion to table passes, yays four, or yays five, nays two. So Mr. Betts, that means that it goes into January?
It means he's got to start all over again.
This, yes, correct.
We take into account the questions that were brought up, points that were brought up.
Can you speak now that it's been tabled? Or should we wait till the end?
I, I, I think, I mean, my gut reaction is you move, you would put that at the end because unless you have business to present.
Okay, council file ordinance number 2, 16251, official ordinance number 562021, an ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year 2022, beginning on January 1st, 2022, and ending on December 31st, 2022. This fixes the tax rate at the same mileage as last year, 13.12 mils as this year. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Mr. Allen, by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16251, and now known as the official file ordinance 562021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keys? Mrs. Shaw? Mr. Winarski? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Brzinski? Council file number 562021 passes, yays six, nays one.
They already locked me up. Yeah, one in.
We've got to move that camera.
I don't know. There's just too many loose ends in it. It was loose ended at the beginning. It never got better.
Did he leave the building? We're waiting for Mel.
Mr. Brzezinski? Charlie Brzezinski? When we get to number three here, I'm going to suggest that rather than vote no and then amend it, you just amend it.
Before we start?
Yeah, assuming, you know, the majority wants to take out the increases.
Yeah, I think we have a vote for that.
Yeah, so you can take out the fee increases and then say the 1.3 million will come from the water authority prepayment.
Okay.
Just.
All you had to put that in writing? The mayor said that we should amend this now rather than shoot it down and then amend it and do it again. Okay? So you're fine with 1.3, no fees.
Same total budget then.
So what, yeah, so what we're doing is we, the mayor has suggested an amendment to the motion. You have a motion and a second. That's how it got on your agenda. The mayor has suggested an amendment. So if the two people that, first and second, whoever that is.
I will.
Shaw and Allen.
If Ms. Shaw and Ms. Allen will accept that amendment, then we can proceed and vote on that amendment, which again would be changing the 1.3 million in projected revenue from sewer and refuse fees and replacing it with 1.3 million from the water reserve, but leaving the revenue and the expenses the same. So the budget would not change in terms of expenditures. It's just where a portion of that money is coming from.
So we can accept the amendment but then vote against it, correct?
As torturous as that would be, yeah, I think that would be it. So you would accept the amendment. Ms. Shaw, would you accept the amendment?
Yes, I'd accept the amendment.
So now we're voting on the budget as proposed with the change that 1.3 million is not from sewer and refuse increases, but coming from the water reserve fund. The water, I'm sorry, the Erie Water Authority prepayment. I'm sorry, my, I apologize. Sorry, Paul. Terms are a big thing there. So that's what you would be voting on. If you like that proposal, you're voting yes on the budget. If you don't like it for any reason, including where the money is coming from, you would vote no.
The money has not been spent, so that money is sitting there.
It's available.
So do we have to formally, one of us has to formally put those words in there for the amendment? Or are we just kind of like, we don't know what we're doing here?
The mayor's proposed it. If you've accepted it, that's what we're voting on.
Okay. Mayor Joe, this is your proposal?
All right.
I think somebody should propose it and second it and then vote.
I propose that we do what Mr. Ed Betza is mentioning.
Do we have?
Okay.
Okay. Council file number 16252, official ordinance number 572021, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022. This is the same amount, 95,718,922, and we are amending it to replace the sewer and refuse increase and replace that with 1.3 million transfer from the Erie Water Authority prepayment.
Correct.
Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance bill number 16252, and now known as official file ordinance 572021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keys? Mrs. Shaw? Mr. Wannarski? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Brzezinski?
Can I say that I wanted the budget the way it was supposed to be proposed?
Yeah, you just did.
That would be a no vote then. I mean, like originally, I wanted what the mayor wanted. So I would vote no then?
Then that would be a no.
Okay.
Five, two.
City council pass official file ordinance number 572021 by yays five, nays two. Maryland's going to have.
And just to explain my vote, it's because I'm the person who would like that cushion there. And I think we need that cushion because you never know what life is going to bring you.
Thank you. Laurie, are you ready?
Yeah, we lost one, but.
Okay.
Council file number 16256, official file ordinance 612021, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $38,49,418 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, funding as the second Trans American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance bill number 16256, and now known as official file ordinance number 612021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council pass official file ordinance 612021 by yays seven, nays zero. Council file number 16257, official ordinance 622021, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, police, drug, and vice program. Sponsored by Mr. Wannarski, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance bill number 16257, and now known as official file ordinance 622021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council pass official file ordinance 16257, 622021, by yays seven, nays zero. Council file number 16258, official ordinance number 632021, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $35,113 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the demolition of Cockaway Avenue Bridge from the county of Erie from the $5 local use fee fund. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the council file ordinance bill number 16258, and now known as official file ordinance 632021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council pass official file ordinance 632021 by yays seven, nays zero. Council file number 16259, official ordinance number 642021, an ordinance amending Article 901, Street Escavation, Section 90106, to combine the permit and inspection fee into one fee to be paid prior to the issuance of a permit and setting the amount of such fee. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the council file ordinance bill number 16259, and now known as official file ordinance 642021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council pass official file ordinance 642021 by yays seven, nays zero. This takes us to new business. Number five has been withdrawn.
James? Move the balance, will you say?
Sure, vote to move the balance of the agenda, Mr. President.
Vote to move the.
Second.
And second by Mr. Witherspoon. Any separations?
Number one?
Number four?
Watson, do number two.
Number nine? Under transfers.
Well, we have the 7,000, the 6, the 45, the 56.
Which dress do you want?
The transfers at the top of the back page, transfer department of finance data.
The 9 million.
President, would you like to have pulled number five?
Yes, Mr. Watson already mentioned that too.
And under trans, oh, and under contracts, number one. Sorry about that, guys.
Contracts, number one.
So I have number one, number two, number four, number nine. Transfer of 9 million and number 16, which is the first, it's number one under contract. We have a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda, voting on the resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven, nothing. We have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Wannarski, that city solicitor is authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie being Part One Administrative Code, Title Three, Article 111, Section 11106, compensation to the city council, which presently establishes the compensation of members of council at 6,000 by increasing the annual amount to 10,000 per year, and president of council from 7,500 by increasing the annual amount to 11,500. That increase in compensation shall not apply to the current terms of any council member now in office or such members' replacement for the duration of a current term of office, commencing the first Monday of January 2024 and the first Monday of January 2026. Discussion?
I put that on, 1986, I think, was the last time that they even played with putting any kind of money into city council. I lovingly call this the Michael Keys resolution because he'll be running in four years. How many years? Two years? He'll be the first one to get that money. I'll probably be dead at this rate. But I just thought it was something fair to do. We're talking, you know, what, in five years, the difference of 8,000? That would be, well, three people. Three people would start in 25 and go from six to 10.
$12,000.
$12,000. Yeah, I think that might be jump change. Ms. Allen, you pulled it, so you probably have something to say, I'm sure.
I do have something to say, which is what I said in the paper. I said it's the wrong meeting in the wrong time. It's not that, this is an issue that should be looked at. This is a 66% increase, and it demonstrates exactly what's wrong with the way we operate. We don't raise fees, and then all of a sudden, we're going to raise them. This is ridiculous to say, let's do this big lump sum. I mentioned that city council members are eligible for the health insurance plan, and I'd like to know how much the health insurance plan, eh, Paul, can you look it up? I don't think you were here in 86, and not tonight, but I would like to know how much this line item was for city council for health insurance in 1986 versus 2022. So I'm voting no, and I'm not doing it because, you know, you want to be like the person who holds the line on salaries. In fact, I think that the new incoming city council people should get longevity pay for having been here for these last couple torturous meetings. But this really demonstrates how we don't act in a fiscally responsible manner. We should have looked at this before. We shouldn't be doing a 66% increase, and we should not have to put the burden on the new council people next year to have to figure out what to do about the refuse and the sewer fee and the stormwater fee. So I'm voting no.
Anybody else ready to go to the order? Or not good to the order? Let's get the vote.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Wannarski?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Motion fails three to four.
Sorry, Michael.
Okay, we have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Wannarski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that Kathy Shaw of 2437 East 43rd Street, Erie PA, is hereby appointed to the Human Relations Advisory Committee for a three-year term commencing 1/1/2022 and will expire 12/31/2024. Discussion?
Kathy was nice enough to concur with us when we asked her to do it. She'll be worth the addition to that. She has been in her time on council already with so many things. So we thank you for taking that, Kath, and.
Maybe she can get a raise.
Not 66% though.
Thank you. I am looking forward to serving. Thank you.
Okay, call for the vote.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven yays, nays, zero nays. Resolution sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that a resolution receiving a communication from Merrick Pacific Company, 1738 West 20th Street, regarding the request to close and vacate a portion of West 20th Street between Haybarger and Burst is hereby received and referred to the city planning commission for recommendation and report thereon. Council directs the city solicitor to prepare for council's consideration any necessary documents to effectuate the closure of the roadway. Discussion?
Mr. President? I have just a question. Actually, we had a business.
Actually, we had a business owner email us, and I had responded back because I know during that, when this was presented during the study session, I had asked if there has been any communication with the neighbors during that, during that meeting. And if I recall correctly, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that he said there was conversations with neighborhood residents and businesses.
He said there would.
There would, there would. Okay, okay. And I know we're just referring to the planning commission. I decided to ask that question because I wasn't sure. And like I said, I must have, I missed the way they, that was termed. So, okay.
Breaks my heart. That's a nine-year-old baseball field that a lot of guys grew up on and ended up... Tommy Lawless going to World Series in the Grand Slam.
Yeah.
A lot of those kids started out there.
Okay, so I'm glad they're going to have that conversation then. So that clarifies it. Thank you.
So I don't know if they... Okay. I don't know if they've had the conversation, but I did do a drive-through today. And you probably didn't see him on the, on the print there where Haybarger Street's there, and it looks like it's a dead end, but it's not. It's an actual street there that has two houses right there on the corner who, who would be essentially having their... To get out of the neighborhood, which I think Twenty-first Street would be a much better solution for them, but there are people who are impacted, and I don't know if we have notified them. And then to the second, I call this the male Witherspoon. The male Witherspoon says, "We don't give anybody something without asking for anything," which we haven't asked for anything, and I understand economic development, "but we're giving away a city street, and a city street has value." And I'm just going to leave it there for future consideration for things who are in businesses who are asking for things that are of considerable value that they provide something to the city for. Or whether it's a fee for having a street, you know, permanently closed or however it can be contrived. But under tutelage of my master, I don't think we should give away things and not give anything.
Any further objections here? Let's call for the vote.
Yeah, don't we, as David said, aren't we just sending this to the planning commission? Yeah, I drove through there today too. Michael, we might have like passed each other. I drove by a couple of times, and I actually, I was surprised at how much activity there is at Rehrig Pacific. I mean, it was pretty amazing.
Okay.
So...
Okay, yeah, we're simply trying to... But I think that those are things that should be in, you know, whoever's working this out.
This originally came from Mr. Groner, I believe, didn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I think they filled a lot of the scores on him. Call for the vote?
To clarify, there's a typo on the agenda. It should be Rehrig, R-E-H-R-I-G, Pacific Company. It's correct on the resolution. We just missed it on the, on the agenda. Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven, nothing. We have a resolution resolved by, sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, resolved by the city council of the city of Erie that the change order on the contract of Dogastino Electric, Electronic Services, Inc. It's easier to read it off the agenda. It's really a little complicated on here. As recommended and concurred with by the Department of Public Works and Dogastino Electronic Services for the proposed City Hall Security Project for increased scope of work as approved as follows. Original contract, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three, forty-six. Change order, thirty-seven thousand, seven forty-five, thirteen, for a final contract amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven, four eighty-eight, fifty-nine. Discussion?
Mr. Keys?
Just that, I don't know what the other one was. It's just something to be cognizant of that when we overrun, we have to appropriate more money and that since Paul's still back there, make sure this enters the bucket also to be reimbursed.
Let me call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Resolution passes seven yays, nay, zero. Resolution, the transfer in the account of finance, American Rescue Act funds allocated to the city of Erie, planning parks and IT departments. Nine million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand from ARP Act expenditures to nine hundred thousand to digital infrastructure code enforcement, seventy-five thousand to website redesign, five thousand to parks, public space improvements, one million, five hundred to the East Bayfront Greenway, one million, five hundred to the Quinte redevelopment, forty thousand to the Cities of Service, and a hundred and forty thousand's groundwork. Discussion?
You're Mr. Keys.
I am. So, so that, you know, there's a lot of good things in this plan, and I look forward to seeing us accomplish them. However, there are two line items on here that I'm not comfortable with at this time. We've given over five million dollars to... For remediating light and demolition, and demolition of properties within our city. And I think that out of that, at the average of twenty thousand dollars, that's already enough money to do over four hundred houses. And so I don't think we should be allocating anything else to this at that time. And the next item, also, the Quinte redevelopment. I drove through there several times since, since the study session, and I'm thankful that we have a way of cleaning it up now. But I don't see putting this type of costly amenity there at this point of if we don't know if we can do it, why we would hold up the money in hopes that someday that it can be done.
So what do you want to do? You want to amend this transfer?
Yes, I'd like a motion to amend this transfer to six million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand and zero, zero dollars.
Taking out the what?
Taking out the one point five for the Greenway and one point five for Quinte redevelopment.
And putting it in the general fund or...
No, it won't go in the general fund. It's just money that would not be allocated
Not be allocated.
Out of the ARP fund for now.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Mr. Keys, a second.
Ladies, can you clarify that for us?
No.
Really?
There's a motion to discuss.
Oh, I don't know. I just, I want to make sure we can do it, that's all.
Yeah, done.
I'm looking for a second to the amendment, and then we'll vote on the amendment.
If, if we can't speak during the motion, no one can speak during the motion. Am I correct?
I mean, typically, if there's a motion, there's nothing to discuss unless there's a second.
I'll second it so we can discuss.
Now we got a motion, a second, a discussion, if you have questions, if you have a question.
Is there a question for me?
If this money is not allocated by the end of the year, what, what happens? And you may have mentioned this at the study session for one regarding this.
Well, there's, I mean, the money, the out, the timing of the allocation isn't as important as knowing that the funding is there to actually do these projects. These are going to be multi-year projects. And so we wanted to move forward with making sure that those funds were there so we could start work on the Greenway Trail for East Bayfront and for Quinte. The plan for Quinte, I think that might be a little bit easier to kind of play out. The plan for Quinte is, once that property is cleared, it will be turned over to the city to be a park. So to have funding in place now so we can start planning, doing the design work, working with the engineers who are cleaning up the site on how it can be remediated so we can use it for what residents need. There's going to be a lot of outreach. But we wouldn't want to start that if we don't know where the money's going to come from. So we're asking for that funding to be guaranteed there now and so we can move forward with an assurance that all of that time and energy and funding needed to do design work and community outreach is there and then to actually build the park the way that residents want it.
So we take it over clean? All asbestos and whatever's in the ground, clear it up? Or are we going to inherit that?
We're paying for that.
No, you're, you're paying for that.
For all that cleanup?
Correct. So that's what the Redevelopment Authority is doing with the numerous funding plots that they have available, and then it will be turned over to the city. You are actually doing yourself potentially a disservice if you're not allocated. This is money that, that you will utilize for a park that you will own. So it's not going to some other entity. It's not going to the benefit of some other entity. So just keep that in mind. You're really just putting in a guarantee that this project can move forward in a way and in a manner that's really deserving of the people who've had to live across from this for decades. So we really want to do it justice.
We... I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Witherspoon.
Hey, now, to put a park there, is it the city's idea? Or did you, not you in particular, but did we talk to the folks in that neighborhood? Did we talk to Booker T. Washington Center, who's a block and a half away?
For the idea of a park rather than some other reuse of that site?
Even a business, say, who knows, somebody...
The, the recommendation that it not be, that it's not suitable for redevelopment as a commercial or an industrial use came from the County Redevelopment Authority after they assessed the site and the market. So they, they did not believe that it was going to be viable for any of those alternative uses. I, I don't recall the, the discussion, but I'm sure the idea of putting residential there becomes extremely costly because of the cleanup requirements that would be necessary. So other uses, so a park, it fits very well in that, in what can be reused for. It would be, it would be active. It would be beneficial. So what the uses and what the, how it will be used as a park or recreational space, that will come through community outreach and discussion with the stakeholders who are there.
So no outreach has been done thus far?
Not to determine its current use or its, its projected use as a park.
Will that take place at some point prior to building the park?
Absolutely, in the most robust way you've ever seen. We will, I, we will not make a move unless the residents support what is going, what is going to be into that, in, in that park. And that theme has been carried out through all of the requests through this particular ARP line or multiple line items. Community outreach is going to be essential. We just need time to do that and some assurances that as we move forward, there'll be funding to actually do the work that, that they're telling us needs to be done there.
Okay, my main concern is when you put a park there, French Street, very high-traffic use, and, and they go beyond the speed limit. And that's fifteen friends. So I'm very interested in seeing what type of protection fence-wise that you have there. Because if you have little kids running down the street, we're in trouble. I agree.
Thank you for that. That, that's not lost on, on this, this idea. It's multi-years. To speak to the East Bayfront Plan, this is, this is one of the city's most transformational priority projects that you've approved. But for the funding, we've, we've barely been able to scratch the surface on how we would actually create this Greenway system. And again, I wouldn't bring this to you if it wasn't something that was already adopted over a year ago. We finally have the funding to actually, to put this, this plan in action.
No. As I say, I, I agree with you in, in a conceptual way, but we gave the Redevelopment Authority fifteen million dollars to include upwards of five million dollars to remediate light. And I think that that's where you, that's enough to demolish over, what, that's five million? Like over four, three hundred and fifty houses. So I think that that's where you should start with the Greenway, with using them to help you target wherever you're going to put the Greenway to use the funds that we've already allocated for demo, demolishing properties.
And, and I, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for, to talk about the housing plan, but I don't believe it's five million. I believe it's around two million. I know you can pull it up, Mr. Keys, for acquisition.
So...
But I, I just want to kind of bring you back to the cost of light report that I submitted to you. The, the issue of light and abandoned housing in the city, I'm sorry, how much is it?
No, I said it's, it's big. We have like a hundred fifty on official lighting. We know that there's more.
No, it's, it's five hundred. It's five hundred that we know exist. We have lighted about a hundred and seventy officially lighted, declared lighted, going through the process. The Redevelopment Authority has condemnation. Unfortunately, that's, that's not always the process that you have to take in order to acquire and demolish properties. But unfortunately, that's, that's the most painful process. So with the, I, I can't remember the two million, I believe we had, I can't, like, eighty-nine properties, I believe, is what we had estimated with the funding that you allocated to the, sorry.
So on there, there was the two-point-something million for acquisition and demolition. And then there was line two, which was three-point-something million, which it said for new construction, but if you read the notes, it was also for demolition.
Which, what, right, exactly. I wouldn't put that in the same category as straight light remediation or removal. But as I, again, trying to remember, eighty-nine properties is what we had estimated for that one line item. You have over, almost four hundred more that you're going to have to deal with. So the, it's a drop in the bucket of the funding that was allocated to what the need is in the city. And in fact, as we've had discussions with the Redevelopment Authority, they're going to have to take that, that amount and double or triple it to really make the impact that's necessary in, in the city. It's just the reality. So we know some of those dollars will go into the East Bayfront concept, but we need much more. And we also want to make sure that what we do is put back in place something that is an asset to the Lower East Side, something that they can be proud of, something that they will be happy to live beside instead of a hundred vacant lots that usually end up getting junk debris and hundreds of tires on them. That's been the past practice, and we need to do something immediate and impactful now. So I really do support the funding requests that are in front of you. I'm passionate about East Bayfront particularly because I spent the first two years of my life with the city, working on that, knocking on doors, talking to people, listening to all the stories that you hear. So to actually have the city come up and say, not only did we adopt that plan as our plan, but now we're going to put some real funding behind it, is really something to be proud of.
Kathy, back to the Quinte one. How much do you think it'd be just to clean the property up and not plan on just saying, putting a park there just yet? Just to clean?
You have those, you have those dollars in place. This is really to do, now, we're going to learn some things as we go through design and process so that we may not need all of this funding. And if we don't need all of this funding, it goes back into the ARP to be reallocated. But it's going to take us this long to go through exactly what I laid out from Mr. Witherspoon. We need to do outreach, community engagement. We need to do design, redesign, and then...
Possibly at the end of the day, may not be a park.
Well, I think it's going to be a very active park, but it, it's... Well, I think it's going to be a very active park, but it's going to be some sort of recreational amenity that meets the needs of our residents.
When you get to the designing stage and the redesign stage, just make sure, make sure that the basketball court is not as nice as the one on East 19th Street.
That is, that is a sticky note on my desk right now. So I was thinking ahead just.
And that case have vote, yes.
Kathy, I just want to make one more comment, is that I think it would be foolish not to approve this funding. Because otherwise, what we've done is we've gone and knocked stuff down with no plan for what's going to happen next. And that's what's happened, as you said, with a lot of vacant lots. Knock them down and then we have these gaping holes in different neighborhoods where there are empty lots and nothing there. The Greenway plan has, is, but there was no money to do that. I think we ought to also recognize that we're fortunate that the Erie County Redevelopment Authority, it finally dawned on the authority that the city is part of the county and they came in and said, we're going to get rid of that blighted property. I think I've talked before about walking over there and seeing little kids telling me about the rats running over there. So this is an opportunity. But I think now we still have to vote on the amendment, right? Is that where we're at? Or whatever it is.
I believe we're voting on the amendment to, with Mr. Betts will clarify.
I guess, that's why I was talking to Ms. Watson. In order to get on the agenda, you have a motion and a second. So the motion has already been made and it's been seconded. So you have to vote, Mr. Keys has made an amendment, but you're, you're going to have to vote on the motion and the second, the, which has the full amount before you're going to vote on the amendment. The amendment would be rendered moot if it passes. So you have a motion and a second to fund the full amount. So just to be clear, Mr. Keys would, from his comments, would be voting no on this motion. I don't know what everyone else is voting, but if you want to fully fund them, you're voting yes. If you don't, you're voting no. Mr. Keys would then have a second motion, which was seconded by Mr. Winarsky, to fund a portion of it, but not all of it. So just to be clear, what you're voting on now is to fund the full amount. Everything that's on the list, you're paying. If you don't like that, you've got to vote no.
Meetings.
This may be my last meeting.
One too.
I feel so bad for the minutes tomorrow. Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, that the transfer of $9,155,000 broken down to those other amounts is, is voted on. So we're going back to the original one. Do you want me to say all those things again? Okay, so we're voting to transfer $9,155,000 from ARP money to the other several items. Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. Okay, the resolution passes six to one. So that makes the Second Amendment Resolution, First and Second, a moot point. One more. Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, resolved by the council, the city of there, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Dave Holman, Fleet Service, for the purchase of 2022 Chevy Traverse for $30,420 and 2022 Chevy Colorado for $29,370 for the police vice department at a total cost of $59,790. Discussion?
Mr. Keys?
I just can't believe we're buying more gasoline-powered vehicles in 2020, in the coming.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. Motion passes seven to nothing. This takes us to committee reports.
Okay, let us remind people right away that there's a five-minute time limit.
My phone's going to die before I can.
All right, I'm going to talk really fast. First of all, I know my friend John Whaley left, but I want him to know that I'm very familiar with Gordon Lane because my late son's best friend lived there. And we used to get phone calls. The parents would go to Arizona for a couple of weeks during the winter. While the kid is in high school, mind you, the parents would call from Arizona and say, what the hell is going on at our house? And I said, I don't know. How the hell should we know? And they were parties. That was way before Airbnb, so I know Gordon Lane. I attended.
You partied there?
No. Told my son to get home so he couldn't be at the party. All right. I attended the SPCP meeting by Zoom on December 1st and the group is talking about how do they take what's going on behind closed doors, which are some really good frank conversations about how to improve trust and improve relationships in the community and take that narrative elsewhere. There was some more detailed explanation of the body cams, some of the same video that we saw. And what are the officers said, that some of the harshest critics are now the biggest supporters of body cam. So that was good to hear. I attended the council of government meeting via Zoom last week. I almost felt guilty about telling you this, but for newly elected officials, there is training that's available from the Pennsylvania Borough Association. There's also Pennsylvania Municipal League Training. Unfortunately, that training is the same day as our city council meeting in February. It's in State College, but you can do this stuff by Zoom if you're interested. The very first one is how long are your municipal meetings? Learn how to use that meeting time more efficiently. So I think we should all do that. I did go to the redevelopment authority meeting on Monday and I can assure you, there's a good board, a good staff, and they're ready to build capacity to implement the ARP plan. I also attended the bike briefing plan for council that was by Zoom. And again, thank you, John Whaley, because this manual prepared me to hear about bike lanes, protected bike lanes that are actually, I think that they're going to be, some of them on French Street, Mel, which I think will help with the traffic. And some part of that is going to be two-way lanes as they had in Washington DC. In other parts on Green Garden, there'll be, I think Green Garden might have a portion too where it's two-way. They have to really work on this because of the way our streets are, but anyhow, the bike plan is coming along. And just on COVID, I'm hoping that, I'm going to make my, every other week plea that I wish we could stand up and get everybody vaccinated. I reported 15 deaths today and the incoming county executive has said that he is going to lift the mask mandate for schools and leave it up to individual districts.
What are we saying this? Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items, I'll try to be quick also. With Airbnb, I just wanted to note that definitely it was asked, what's best for our city? And right now, it just doesn't seem that this is clear. So I wish we can get it over with, but I'm kind of glad that we're going to get it figured out. And I'm sorry it has to extend, but that's, that's what the council wishes. It was on the agenda, we didn't talk about it earlier, but Brian Slawn for the Airport Authority, I just want to note that very, very smart person, he's going to be great for that board, one of Erie's biggest cheerleaders. He'll be bringing a lot of experience to that board and I'm looking forward to seeing his, his leadership with the Airport Authority. I attended the Erie Parking Authority meeting yesterday. Just want to report, they're in a better financial position than expected at the beginning of the year, so that's a good thing. There's new equipment going in the garages, a new kiosk planned for 2022, so you'll be seeing that soon. There was a discussion at the board meeting about increases in like parking fees. It was shared that some of the fees throughout Pennsylvania, and we're one of the lowest. And again, they're constantly battling, trying to have enough, have enough resources to pay for garages, to pay for everything they need to do in a city. So that's something they're, they're looking at and they want to make sure they have the data behind any possible proposal. The Erie Parking Authority continues to look, to seek new staff. They're looking for five new staff members. It's been very tough finding, finding staff members lately. I think it's been challenging for everybody. So they just, I just want to kind of put that word out there, if anyone's looking, they do have some availability for those positions and I'm sure they're on their website. I haven't looked at those positions exactly, but I'm sure they're there. And then also, the Park Authority Board is looking forward to discussing the administration with the municipal agreement. So that's still out there for review and discussion. And just lastly, I just wanted to note that it's been a very, a couple of interesting years on council. It's, these two years have been probably my most challenging on council, just with the pandemic, with all the issues that we've come across. But yeah, I just wanted to, I was honored to be even chosen for these two years on council and, you know, I just want to thank the citizens of Erie who supported me in the past, my past term on council. And I just hope I made a positive contribution to the city. Thank you.
Dave, thank you for your service and remember, you have our numbers, so if you have concerns out there, you're still part of us.
Okay, thank you.
Always will be. Thank you. Ms. Shaw? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh boy. Part of me says, well, I should give you all a Christmas gift and not do anything, like just say, okay, it's been good. But you know what? I think I'm using up my five minutes. I hate to say that. I think I'm really going to miss all of you. You're all very special and I am so privileged to have worked with you. And I am just so blessed to have been elected to this position because it has been such a learning and growing experience. So many people I have to thank and I wouldn't even know where to begin, except I do want to thank Freda Tepper because she's become a friend of mine and we had started out originally running against each other when we were running for office. So it's been a pleasure having Freda enlighten me in areas of pedestrian safety and disability awareness. So I want to thank everybody and I just think that we have the hardest working administration because that's why I ran. And Paul, sitting back there so long, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss going. So I've decided, I talked to Larry and I said, I think I'm going to go to the evening council meetings, but instead of getting up there and complaining, I'm going to go up and I'm going to use my five minutes for positivity. So I think I'm, I'm just going to do that. I think we have the best solicitor ever and Mayor Joe, you're awesome and amazing. And kudos to the new council people who have been in a good way of coming because now you know, from tonight, this is like, this is what it is. I don't get home till 11 o'clock on occasions when there's like a, a big issue item going on, you know? So thank you to Lori because you were like, you know, the, you were what, the person who we were in contact with and Marilyn and Rose and our new people that have come in since Rose has gone. Kelsey, Kelsey. And yeah, so I just don't know where to begin. It's been such an experience. It really, really has. It's been a growing experience. And thank you to all the people who have kept me busy over the past four years because you want to live in a good, safe neighborhood. So you have issues and you call your councilperson. So thank you, everybody. God bless you. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. And you'll be around, we know that. And you have our numbers. Yeah. Hon Winarsky, you up?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your kind words.
I know it's been a long evening. Who would have thought the last night of doing this would be this long and entertaining? But what can I say? It's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you currently and over the last four years, three years, two years. I respect every one of you very much. You are like family, really. Mayor, we worked together as a council, we worked administration and council, so much I'm not going too far though, it's just across the street a little bit and I'm still going to be around. Please, as in the last 12 years, something comes up, feel free to call. I'm in the book, still in the book. Book's about this thick now, but I will definitely still be accessible. I like helping people. That's why I did this, keep common sense in this. Never ever stated I was the smartest guy in the room, as I'm not, but little common sense sometimes goes a long way. Did do this with some people that unfortunately aren't with us anymore, but Jim Thompson was one when I started out, Pat Capabianca, Jessica Heran, like I said, Mr. Schember, Jimmy Clem, great guy. He really was. He helped, he meant a lot to this council. What can I say? It's been a nice ride. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. Ms. Shaw, God bless you. You have a heart bigger than all of us. Mel, big brother, even from another mother. Mr. Keys, been a pleasure. David, always a pleasure. Liz, you got spunk, honey. Thank you. It's been a pleasure, everyone.
What about me?
Oh. Mr. President, I was just finishing up. And a close edge you over here. Wish you all the luck. Just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone and we'll be around. Thank you.
Jimmy, thank you. I can't thank you enough over this year, you know how much I leaned on you. Okay, Mr. Witherspoon, make my day.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to those who are leaving us, I wish you well, wish you happy holidays, I wish that you stay safe and your family remain in good health. That is so, so important. I say that to you three as a group, but I really just mean two individuals. This year, this year was probably, it was the toughest budget year. This is my 18th budget. I've been doing this for 18 years, not straight, had a break, came back. And this, this has been the toughest one yet. And I really believe it was tough because we got federal money, ARC. That's what made it tough. You know, money, there's old saying that money is the root of all evil, but there's another saying, there's a necessary evil. But we got through it, we're going to make it work and I appreciate it. Kathy, I learned more about the homeless than I ever knew. And I'll be talking with you about that. I'll be doing a little more, keep that going for you. David, thank you. I call David's daughter my princess and continue to give her my love because she's special to me. Big brother? You? Don't worry. You know, mother says that you don't have nothing good to say about somebody, you don't say nothing at all. That's in my report, Mr. President.
Mr. Keys?
I would just like to take the sign to wish my colleagues who are departing, you know, wish you well in whatever endeavors you go to next. And to Mr. Winarsky, we'll be keeping an eye on you over there at the county across the street. And I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and see you next year, not before.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. And mine will be quick. I wish everybody a happy holiday. It was a tough one, Mayor, but we worked together, and I think we helped a lot of people. And if we have to do other things next year, I'll be right beside you, trying to make it happen. People who are departing fairly well, they say. We're going to miss you. And good picking on Mr. Witherspoon, I tell you. Anyway, everybody should be ready to go, except we have to listen to, Mr. Betschel, I'm sure you don't want to talk.
I have nothing. And I'll be very brief. I just want to also thank all of council for working together last year. We don't have to always agree. I think we remain open to listening to each other and come up with better solutions that way, so I really appreciate it. Of course, I want to give some special wishes to Dave, Jim, and Kathy. It's been great working with the three of you. I look forward to staying in touch with all three of you as things move forward. Never hesitate to contact me with input or questions. I welcome that. I also want to thank our three incoming city council people. I know Jasmine had to leave. She was here for quite a while. Chuck Nelson in the back, and Mr. Troop. Haven't had a chance to talk with you yet, if you have a minute after we're all done. Just like a minute with you if you could. I'm about an hour and a half past my normal bedtime, but I can stay awake a little longer if I think. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, everybody have a wonderful holiday. Paul, thank you so much. We roasted you pretty good. Thank you. Take good night.
City council adjourned at ten forty-eight PM.
Do we have to have another meeting?
Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, and Mr. Witherspoon.